So.
We turned from recess, from open session to our work session. And uh. We've got, and I haven't looked, we have a summary of what we did Tuesday?
Yes. And the bottom line of the operating plan as things stood.
Say again?
And the bottom line of the operating plan based on the decisions that have been made.
And. That bottom line has EMS billing in. And the city of Westminster Pure Water as one time only, or is it still current?
One time.
It's one time.
It's not coming out of fund balance right now.
So. So I see my don't understand. We added that man and half, we were a man and a half ahead.
Right, okay, so. Right now. We had more revenue on the bottom line in 25 than we need to balance where we were. So we didn't take, we haven't assumed we need to take money out of fund balance to pay that 1.5%.
Oh, okay, so it's one time money, but it's not fund balance money, gotcha, so.
Depending on where we end up, you don't look at where we are in 25, and if we need to move 200,000 or 1.3 million from fund balance, then we'll, we'll do that when we get there.
You guys are too particular, so you wanted the balance exactly. What a concept. Okay, commissioners?
Can I start off? We had a lot of conversation. I don't want to say jump over a little hill. But I do feel like it's a small elephant in the room, and that's dealing with the library. And the reason I even would call it an elephant is because of the community's comments that we've received. Again, social media twists things, just like I've been saying for quite some time, and it's a bit frustrating. I do appreciate the emails or texts when they're directly to me, and I can have a conversation, you know, as opposed to a cut and paste email to all the commissioners and say, we have strong memories, and if you don't do what we want, you know, it'll be at the voting booth or whatever, and I'm like, okay, delete that one. You know, it's not delete the sentiment, but delete the email because if I get 27 of cut and paste, they do me no good. But the individual ones are very important to me. And the same thing on social media, when they're individual to me, I say, hey, email me, text me, here's the number. And just like you collectively, wow, responsive. The intent originally of funding the library was to provide $169,000 one time for FY '25, and having the library match funds from their reserve. Right?
Fund balance.
Fund balance, from their fund balance. That was a discussion that we had with the library, with the executive director, and part of the board, and this was weeks ago, and we were in a path going in that direction. I'm not sure where the hiccup was, we didn't take money away from what we said. The discussion from Tuesday was keeping that 169,000 in place with a contingency to better understanding the fine situation and the Sunday hours. I learned a lot, you know, about the fines, I was not aware that and Commissioner Gory and I talked about this earlier, about buying the books, or you have to buy books if you lose them, or if you get to a certain point, and if you don't buy the book, then you lose the privilege of the library. And that was new to me, and also that librarian who, I don't know whether she has her master's in library studies, when she was describing it as well with these studies was pretty pretty, you know, important to me, that.
And I'll be honest.
Well, I apologize.
If I would have gotten answer to the email, I'd have explained that, we wouldn't be here.
I know, so. I get you, and her comment, which I really appreciated, saying that monetary fines create a barrier in the library system for its patrons, I was like, I never thought of it that way, and.
I still don't.
Well, I mean, but it's something that she, she said, so I appreciate that. So, so that was an answer to that part, the answer to the Sunday hours still is bothersome and understandable at the same time, bothersome that it wasn't discussed where those funds were going to go when they shut down the pilot program of Sunday hours. They absorbed the dollars, it was 120,000, I believe, that was provided to them, operational funds to provide Sunday hours in the two or three libraries. During around the same time, Exploration Commons was standing up, and it was told to us that they did not need additional funds to staff Exploration Commons. It's common sense to me, well, if they shut down the Sunday hours, well, where are those people going to go? They're going to go over to Exploration Commons, they're funding and, you know, staffing Exploration Commons with those resources, so comments this morning saying that, you know, additional funds and additional staffing was never provided. It was told to us that they did not need to provide, and we did not need to provide. There are the other things that we do provide, whether it be the utilities of the.
Nicely put, we provided Exploration Commons.
We, yeah, along with Philanthropic and other, yes, but we provide, you know, the utilities, we provided public works during the process of developing Exploration Commons, so there's definitely secondary tertiary effects of all of this that say, we're funding a lot when it comes to the library. The library, and Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm correct, the library, the community college, and the public schools have their own operational reserve. Correct? Is there a.
Fund, fund.
Fund balance, fund balance, I say it one word, fund balance, all three. When we provide funds and we allocate or execute our dollars to those three entities, we then lose our authority over those dollars, and they can use them any way they want. And. So, so my, my thing is, we've, we've answered the questions about the contingencies, or what's, what's contention, and it's up to them to use their fund balance to match. I, I don't know why they came to us in such a hard way or tidal wave of saying, put back things from the Tuesday, we never took it away, no, no dollars were ever taken away. Questions were asked, and now I believe they've been answered, so. That's kind of where I'm sitting, and I just want to move on from that after we make a decision, if necessary, to go on to the next topic like Fire EMS and other big ticket items like the 1.5 million with the wastewater, you know, not wastewater, the Pure Water Project in Westminster, I mean, these are big tickets that we got to talk about.
So, and taking money away, despite being a good time for a little summary for everybody who's listening, so I actually had one person come up to me and say, can you explain to me what's happened with, with the funding? And the answer is, in the plan that we adopted last year, which covered fiscal years 24 through 29, in fiscal year 25, there was a plan for a 3% increase to the library. I want to emphasize, plan, it's not, it's not promise, it's not guaranteed at that point. And that would have been 300 and some thousand dollars, I don't remember the exact number. The commissioners, in their proposed budget, so this was not on Tuesday, but this was before we got to Tuesday, the commissioners had first flat funded the library, and I think it's important to point out, it was not the only agency that was flat funded, but then said, we'll put back half of the, what would have been the increase.
Right.
But only as one time money. So then when we got to Tuesday, yes, everybody who has said you took something away on Tuesday is just wrong, that, that didn't happen.
Right.
What happened on Tuesday, though, was the adding of the idea that we're going to appropriate it, but we're not going to release the money unless these conditions are met.
Right, and I think with that said, a lot of the conversation that took place between Tuesday and now, we've gotten a lot of the answers, especially when it comes to fines, because I did not, I, I just didn't know that, that was new news to me, how fines and, you know, you know, the, because the executive director, she shared with me early on that taking away fines actually increased the, the books going through the library, like they're not, I don't want to say being stolen, but they're.
Circulation.
Circulation, thank you, has increased when the fines went away, maybe it's because of that having to buy the book and taking away some of the barriers, I, so, that's kind of what I'm praying.
And, and they alluded to April 9 emails, unfortunately, whoever did the PIA did it, I forget, April 15th, and I actually added an April 19th email to it as some backup, and they saw the April 9th email, they didn't see the meetings since then or the emails since then, and I said, I'd like you to reconsider the fines and explain it to me.
Yeah.
And I'd like you to consider Sundays. I've probably got weaker on the fines, although I, it's not logical that stopping fines gets books, it's just, none of that's logical, which is okay. But Sundays, we heard today also, oh, you're going to get five people there, a couple of our surrounding counties actually said in some of their branches, Sundays are the busiest days. I, I think we need to look at that hard, and, and if that takes more one time money this year to get started, and we talk about what we got to do, I, I just think it's very foolish not to look at that, and then we did get an agenda today that their board is meeting Tuesday to discuss all this, and beyond the agenda, I haven't gotten an answer from my last email, so. I'm still not happy with a lack of response, even if I would have gotten an email, say, the board's meeting, and I'll get back to you after that, it's a it's, it's, it's disappointing, but I think if they really meet Tuesday and they talk about it, as long as all this is resolved before July 1st, it doesn't make a bit of difference in their money, because they wouldn't have it until then anyway. So, I, I think it's a, and it's typical social media, you know, it was the, the, when, when you see a blog say, that's not true, you need to look at the meeting, it's a, I thought, because I thought maybe some of the blogs would jump on it too, but, but if I want to be tactful, maybe people just didn't understand, like Ted said, that, you know, they, they didn't understand, but I think they, some of them understood pretty well, they just didn't tell the truth. And that's unfortunate, and, and again, I want, like you said, I want public comment, I want emails, when they're based on untruths, and they're all copied, after, after 10 or so, you get tired of them. And I did read the history of this at a regular meeting, I'm not, I think, I think we're done with the library for now.
Well, I'd like to see the money without the strings attached, the one time funds, work with the library as ex officios on the boards, get more, and we agree to all of this, get more involved in the board selection, and then work with them throughout the year on better communications and processes with the library. But I don't think, I think I've gotten enough answers on the two issues that you, you know, brought up, and I've built on those, I mean, just like we talked about cannabis earlier today, I did a lot of trying to understand education on, on the topics, and I think I've gotten, for me, satisfied, you know, for this, not taking money away and not putting money in, the money's there, but let's just put it there and say, let's move forward, and don't put contingencies on it.
I personally think we, I can't get an answer to an email with that contingency. So you take that away, I, I don't know if they're deciding anything Tuesday or not, I think, I think we leave it as is, and we can always in a month say, release it.
I know.
But, but it just.
Maybe it's just a good, a good faith gesture on my part, that that's what I want to do.
I can't get an answer to an email as a good faith gesture.
Well, that's not good faith, that's rudeness, that's, that's rudeness and inappropriate, you know, not getting that, but for me.
So I did email the libraries on Tu- no, I'm sorry, Wednesday morning, the day after, and I asked the questions that I said that I was going to stand by about, you know, what about the fines, and what happened to the money that was originally appropriated for Sunday hours, and I received the answers to those questions. And then this morning, as Commissioner Rothstein had mentioned, the young woman who was also not the one with the master's degree, but the other one, he talked about what happens to somebody who doesn't return the book, that the book ends up as a negative on the account. That seems like that's a worse fine than some kind of fine. So for me, I would have no concern at this point about saying, okay, well, the questions that I had were answered, and I'm okay with removing the contingency for it.
For fines or for Sundays too?
Well, for both, because they're supposed to be, my understanding was that from Tuesday, we were asking about the feasibility of Sundays, not that they were going to do Sundays, that there should be a study about.
And so far, they've told us they're not feasible or not answered, I, again, if I got an answer to the email that said what you just said about what they said today about fines, well, we do charge for the book, we do do this, I'd feel better about it, I, I don't know how, how much to say.
Or maybe we can ask for an email to be sent to you ASAP.
Last time it was during the meeting, but, and, and I'll gladly meet with anybody, I'll gladly talk to anybody. When every county around us has Sundays, but we're implied it isn't feasible to have Sundays, that gives me some doubt. And, and I just think if we don't, and if we don't do some kind of restriction to make sure at least it gets studied and looked at, and like I say, if it comes back that, well, we can open eldersburg on Sunday, but we need 50 grand. You know, that's worth talking about, but no answer is no answer. And to refer to an answer that's over a month old that I already said wasn't acceptable, isn't an answer. And giving people emails to put on Facebook isn't an answer, if you got all that time, you can answer an email. I just, I just feel like, again, whatever the majority says, but all I hear, all I've heard for two years is, we want to hold people to the fire, we want to make change, we want to do stuff, and then when it comes time to do it, I haven't seen us do it yet.
Well, to all your points, and I think they're valid for a variety of reasons. Was intrigued to learn a little more about the fine situation, I think that's definitely different than what we all grew, grew up with in a variety of scenarios. I think that does in some ways probably affect you more, to your point, Commissioner Vigliotti, if you're getting fined for actual full books versus 50 cents here, a dollar there. And I'm not speaking for anybody else other than just my thoughts when I say this. I would be curious, and I don't know enough about their board, and that's not a negative towards their board, but any board I've ever served on for nonprofits, unless it was an absolute emergency meeting that was done within 24 hours, which I can only think of one, which was due to COVID, we weren't ever meeting in a fast enough schedule to get something else answered to anyone, I'm not making excuses or justifying, I'm just making that comment, so if they're having an emergency meeting, I think it's Tuesday, the earliest we'll probably hear would be Wednesday morning, Tuesday nights, my assumption.
Actually, the meeting is tonight.
Is it tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I know somebody said.
It's, it's a virtual meeting.
Okay. And, you know, I think here's, I think here's the thing, I, I don't think any of us in this room have anything against the library personally on, on the bottom end of it, I think if we break it down, it's a huge piece of our community, affects everybody, it's not just books, it's everything from paying your property taxes, the notaries, to allowing people access to technology and so many other things. I understand your frustration and irritation with your thoughts on a variety, but I really truly do. And yes, this board has definitely changed some things versus previous boards, without question, we've approached things vastly differently, I think, at times, and that's neither positive nor negative to either of the boards. To me, I feel like we've kind of, to Commissioner Rothstein's point, I feel like we've kind of gotten those answers. I understand your, your thoughts and ideas.
Who did we get answers from?
We heard some of that today, I thought.
So we got answers from taxpayers?
Well, I know at least some of them actually were talking about the whole library systems in general about fines and such. But I think, we obviously, obviously, we got some information about the Sunday situation as well, we had that earlier.
Yeah, they said it wasn't feasible.
But I guess my point and my thought is. I can understand the idea of wanting to have Sunday hours. I agree with you in that we've got it in surrounding counties. I think the question becomes, and yes, it's their funds. They can use those funds for whatever they choose once they receive them. My understanding, if, if I'm correct, was those funds were to be used towards salaries. And yes, we're looking at giving X percentage to our staff as well. And I'm not letting anybody off the hook here. I don't want anybody to take it that way, but I think for me, I would rather see us remove the two contingencies, front them to half that we've talked about. And let's see where this relationship goes. I don't, I don't say it's perfect, but you know, to Commissioner Rothstein's point, I couldn't use better words, good faith. And believe me, I understand your frustration on a variety of things. I'm not by any means ignoring that fact. I just think we're looking at a bigger picture than just the five of us, the library board or whoever else, and I'm not trying to make that personal. But six months from now, if the world has it improved, we can definitely revisit it.
We don't do anything then either. I mean, if we're going to cave to infactual emails, lies on Facebook and non-answers from the director, we might as well just say, do what you want and walk away. And, and I just, I don't understand, the budget doesn't go in effect till July 1st. We have a month and a half to release that money. And we're willing to do it now without them doing anything. And, and based on, like I say, lies on Facebook and, and non-responses. Uh, again, I, you know.
So what do you?
I understand. And, uh, but like I say, that's.
So could I, I want to ask a procedural, a procedural question here. So when we ostensibly wrap up today, we hope to have a budget ready to vote on on Tuesday. Do we have to vote on what we produced today to vote on Tuesday? So when we get to Tuesday, if we decide to make a change, can we make a change on Tuesday prior to vote?
Well, with something like this, it's not money. I mean, it's, it's decision-making.
Right. So what I'm getting at is if we wait to see how the meeting tonight goes on Tuesday, when we have the final vote for the budget, at that point, it has to be decided here today.
Well, you, I mean, budget peeps can correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you vote on the budget. The, the intention is to vote on the budget today. Tuesday's, uh, more, they, then they have time to produce the ordinance because remember the budget's an ordinance. And, um, and then that, you know, is, is, um, you know, finally adopted on Tuesday, but the ordinance, right? I mean, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to change.
But, but oh, you're suggesting for Tuesday, as we say, we pull the restrict.
Correct, correct.
Not a dollar amount change.
Right. Well, that's.
There's no dollar.
So really we're not changing the budget.
That's correct.
If that's the case, then.
Because that, that seems to me like that's the middle road here, right? I have the answers that I want, but you don't. I know Commissioner Garen hasn't said anything about this. So if, and, and feel free to, for, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but so they're having their meeting tonight to talk about these things that you, all right. So if we wait and see what they have to say tonight, we can make up our minds Tuesday about whether to release the contingency on.
And, or we can do it Thursday, or we could do it the next week, or, you know, yeah, we, we're, we're not tying our hands by leaving it as it is.
So two things. One, I think Robert did call Ted a marshmallow chicken or something by saying peeps, but not sure if it's yellow, but anyways, um, the situation. I want to be very.
He's starting to pronounce his last name.
I want to be very clear. This is that Board of County Commissioners did not take away the $169,000 that at this point we, we put in place for that was misinformation driven by lots of, we have not done that. Commissioner Tyler, all the names they want in the book, along with calling all of us names in the book, regardless, we did not take collectively that money away. What we did say was we're putting this money in place. We would like to see the library use their fund balance to match that money one time for FY25, strengthen the relationships that we have moving forward to then go into an ongoing situation starring FY26. That scenario has not changed. And so all of, like you said, this social media misinformation, okay. That's, that's fine. And we'll, I'm good with that. And we'll just leave it as is. So, okay. Okay.
So just for a quick point of clarification. So if we were to wrap up today, the actual budget that would be today, the presentation would be on Tuesday. And technically, if I'm not mistaken, if that were not to happen, not saying it won't, we would have a, another backup meeting next Thursday on the 23rd, which is still on the calendar, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I might as well say something. Yeah. Emails or no emails, I, I don't feel like those issues are resolved. And it sounds like we have time to do it. And I told a couple, I told a couple of the library folks already, I'm confident we're going to get to a resolution. I do want to understand more about these fines. I wouldn't mind seeing at least the Westminster Library maybe open for a few hours on Sundays. So hopefully we can get there. Uh, I have no interest in publicly financing books that people don't have to return. I mean, it's not a tax sponsored Amazon we're trying to run here. We're, we've got taxpayer dollars here into those books. So, but again, I'm glad we're just going to take a wait and see. It's a negotiation process. I think that's a fair way to put it. And, uh, we've got time. So, yeah. And I'm the, and I'm the, and I'm the one tending their first board meeting. I'll let you guys know how it goes.
Since you're talking, you were at ESAC and you were at our meeting with chief. And we said we wanted to have more meetings with him. To, to make sure the plan comes together. I've told a couple volunteers that our plan from Tuesday was leave the money in CC visa as, uh, insurance. And put money into EMS. So Chief Robinson can do whatever, training, promotions, whatever. He, he, his ultimate goal is next year to have all county paid drivers in EMS. And so none of the companies will need any of their employees and, and, uh, I, I feel like we, we did that. And, and are we comfortable that we did that?
So there's been a lot of discussion since Tuesday. And, you know, it's fair to say that this is, this is a budget process and a lot of things are happening at the last minute. And I think this needs to be one of them. So I'd like to have that discussion. Uh, it's going to involve EMS billing and me having a better understanding of what we did with that 1.5 million again, because what I'm going to be proposing is that we're going to use them, that some, we're going to use EMS billing money to actually fund Fados and ensure that that $320,000 that we've set aside, it goes directly to, um, funding Fados during the summer months, the transition period. And I don't see any problem with giving that money to DFAMs and ensuring that it goes where it needs to go. Not that I don't trust CC visa, but we've already got a voucher program and we can ensure that that happens the right way. But can you explain to me again, the 1.5 million in EMS billing? Cause I think we're going to need it.
Okay, we, we upped the revenue. That can only be used for EMS purposes. So there's no way it goes anywhere else. That put 1.5 million dollars on the bottom line. Then we added the 1.5 million dollars of funding to Westminster. But at that point, we used what was created on the bottom line to fund it, knowing that if other things change, we could still go to fund balance to fund it. So a thing that could change is if you said, we want to add 1.5 million dollars to EMS, uh, then we would no longer have money on the, on the bottom line and we would shift money from the fund balance to pay for the, the Westminster project.
And again, the, the picture on EMS billing, I totally understand that that's not, that's not, you can't really predict those dollars. But it looks as though our efforts aren't without reward. We hired two EMS billing people. And the estimate is that we could be looking at significantly more money in EMS billing. So I'm going to suggest we do just that. Um, I want to use that. And again, I understand that we cannot use that money for Fados. But you understand my point of taking that money, putting it elsewhere. And then I don't know what the right term is.
And we wouldn't be using it for Fados. We'd be using the, the 1.5 you freed up.
Yes. Thank you. That's a much better way of putting it. So the 1.5 we free up, um, would more than pay for, by my estimation, 16 Fados. That's, that's the number that looks like it's going to work in conjunction with Chief Robinson efforts to cross train people to, um, make sure people are trained as Fados that he already has. That is a, that is a, um, that's the enough people, enough Fados to cover the stations. The money we give to DFAMs to cover Fados during the transition period is critical because there is a ton of uncertainty out there. And that's what I want to start talking about. And that's what I'm prepared to propose. And if we do that, we still have a problem of finding the people to hire. And that, that's part of the equation that nobody really wants to talk about. And, and I get it. The arguments about the 84 and I understand that's been the number that's batted around for years. Provided we, we find those people, the money's there. If we don't find those people, we've got a pretty good plan and we've got a great chief to make it work. And even if it does work, we're going to have data coming in. And I think the board unanimously felt earlier this week that regardless of what happens, we're going to have to reevaluate in a constant basis about where people are and where they're going. And that's the chief's job, but that could be something that happens in the future. So I hope I've explained that well enough. And I'd like to put that in motion for discussion.
My, my question before you make a motion. Chief said he could do it with less. I said Tuesday, let's put in 500. Well, I think we put in 180. They're getting $30 million. So they're getting all the billing. You can't add the billing on top of the 30 and say that now they get that too. I'd rather see 500 or a million. And especially since we're leaving the 329 or whatever it was, 320 over there because when we started the budget, it was one or the other. Now we're doing both. And, and I just, uh, I heard a million two, I heard a million, I heard chief said a couple hundred thousand. I, I just, and I said that in the email, the logic of that's billing money. So we get it. Well, no, you got 30 million. If you want to live off just the billing, we, we can talk about that, but I don't think you want to. And, and I'm correct, right? The, the billing all goes to EMS, but so does a lot more.
Yes.
I feel like it's not.
It's 5 million now.
Right. And the, the 320, remember is, is one time. So that, that's just a bridge. Yes, that's.
Yeah.
Which is what they. We're kind of double budgeting in the short term and we are in the way because we don't know. And it's good insurance to play out. So, you know, if the board wants to go down path, the Commissioner Garen's suggesting, or some path that looks like that. What we would need is basically now for you to say, add 500,000, add a million, add 1.5, whatever that, that number is. And we don't know because, you know, in these conversations, we've gone through multiple possibilities of how you could go about doing things. But if the end goal is to make sure that we have Fados for every company, it's, it's going to be expensive. Now, if we put in 1.5 and it turns out we need 1.2 or 900,000, we don't have to spend that money. It's appropriated, it's available. But, um, that doesn't mean it has to get, get spent. And if we do this on the budget side, our goal would be to be watching that money to say, okay, that was put there with the intent of accomplishing this, not other things.
The three, the 320 to CC visa, that is spent.
If we give it to them, it's spent.
Yes, exactly. So if we leave that there, it's spent. So or do you, will you compromise on a million dollars?
Well, my understanding is, uh, the cost for 16 Fados. And again, if we decide to do this, we, we can walk away in knowing that we've, if, if we've hit a mark and, and we'll, and we'll wait and see what happens. But I don't know the exact cost of 16. I thought it was around 1.2. Two, I think it was 87 loaded rate per Fado, if I'm not mistaken, for the county. If someone could do that math for me real quick. And then going back to the 320 for CC visa, as I stare at the former president of CC visa right behind you, this is not an issue of trust or anything of the sort. Uh, this is.
I just wanted to make the point it's spent. It's not like, well, they got them a month early, so we'll get some back. We won't. And that's okay.
And it's okay.
It's good insurance.
I agree, but is that the best use of the money? Or does it make more sense to provide that money to DFAMs and allow them to, through the voucher system, make sure, not make sure, just handle that process over the summer through vouchers, because they've got to be monitoring what's going on at the stations anyway. And I know it's just added work for your department chief, but to me that seems reasonable. We get money to nonprofits all the time. I, I mean, I don't know why it would be a problem for us to do it differently.
I think it's good use of money. Well, the, the problem is, is, is a mechanical one, an illegal one. If the, if the concern we have is if we don't have enough people hired quickly enough, and we won't, we can't have people on July 1st. Or I guess we could start the process. So may, maybe. But if we don't have enough people on July 1st and we're looking to them to continue funding people on their own, they need a source of, of funding. If we, if we keep the money with some idea of, well, if you spend it, we're going to give it to you. The problem is we don't have an appropriation to them in, in place. So you don't have, you don't have the legal authority to give them the money at, at that point. If we want them to be able to do it, then we, we need to appropriate the money in visas.
To CC visa. Okay. Well, I stand corrected then. So while we're working the numbers for a lot, the only reason, other, another, another, um, point of doing this is that if, if we do follow through with this, then as the board, I feel as though now we're moving on to that second phase. We're looking at the data. There were some discussions earlier this week about, okay, let's take a look at feasibility studies, what works best for the county. We can start doing all that now. As opposed to still trying to figure out if we've got people where we need them. Now, is this over for good? Probably not. Uh, I mean, let's face it. It's, it's never going to be over. I mean, it's our fire department. We've got to manage it. It's our, it's on us. But I feel at least this way, we're making some, again, some tough decisions, but we're allowing ourselves to just go to that next level.
So, so are you, we, we put 180 in Tuesday. If we change that 180 to a million one or a million two, are you comfortable?
If, if.
Okay, we, we, we think in the first year, it's still be some one-time costs. It would be one, about 1.6 million dollars. Ongoing, that would be somewhat smaller than that.
About one, a little.
What's the math on that? It's, it's, I don't.
Ongoing would be a little over 1.3. But, uh, but one-time costs would be about 3.
And, and why, why one-time costs being that, what's the, what's the reason that that's more?
Well, we have to have them in, in uniform to.
What, yes.
Yeah.
Offset it.
They need jacket, pants, boots.
SCB.
Breathing apparatus.
You, you guys when, or the chief had that spreadsheet that was pay benefits and then it was uniforms, training, and that's the one-time stuff.
Yes.
And 3,200. Hope that's it. That includes year one overtime for additional pressure. That includes judicial issue.
Come on up here.
Uniforms and burnout gear. So it'd be 80 currently, and that's prior to the, um, pay increase that will come in July 1st. Right now it's 83,600 per Fado.
It's 86. In your chart that you gave us on Tuesdays, over 86,000.
Yeah, it should be corrected to the, the figures I have that were done originally going all the way back to Taylor was I think 83, uh, 600.
So that's the amount that it should be? Or 86, 83 or 86?
Leave what he thinks, not what he says.
Yeah. 86 might be more appropriate because. Yeah, 86 might be more appropriate because we're looking at the pay raise that will come about. And that doesn't look into inflation. So it's like everything else, the cost of our PPE, our turnout gear and things has gone up probably since then by 10 to 20%.
And this really is not surprising because you think, yeah, we, we reduced funding by 2.8 million dollars. And the biggest change that was made was taking away the Fados.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and that was 28 positions that were removed, do we figure 2.8? So if you're adding uh, more than half of them back, then it would be more than half the 2.8 million dollars, just.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's all in the context of EMS billing, which is important to point out.
Well, Fados aren't paid.
I, I understand, but the money can be used in other areas to free up money for the Fados. We have to, we have to use it there. I, I, I don't know if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, so we're not talking about additional money. We're talking about.
Yeah, we are.
So we're talking about additional money?
Yes.
Because that's not what you're saying. I think what you're saying is like a show game. That's what, in your mind, I think that's where you're going, which I'm like, okay, that's cool. But if you're talking additional money.
Well, the trade here is spending the 1.5 million dollars from the additional ambulance revenue versus taking pressure off your bottom line. So you, you, you are adding an expenditure to use up the increased revenue.
So how many Fados?
Well, 16 is what we're talking about here.
16 would be funded and we're going to reallocate part of the floaters. But we've looked at our current overtime budget and our overtime expenditures. Based on last year, we think for a interim measure, we would be able to redeploy 12 of those floaters without difficulty.
Okay, but interim measure though, I mean, if the end goal is to not keep on doing that.
Right, the end goal will be.
But, but there's seven stations.
Right, so it's 28 Fados that we would need.
So four.
Four shifts and you need one Fado per shift.
So the 16 would take care of four stations. And then for the other three stations, we would look at redeploying our, uh, 12 of our floaters. Okay, so that's one to Fados. Positions would make a net of 28. So that would assure that we had staffing 24/7 for all seven of those. And then that money would, whether you give it to CC visa or us, off the gap money, that will be until we can uh, hire people. You're saying then you, you need the 1380, but you still need the 180 from Tuesday because that was for training the other guys. Is that correct?
And if our goal is eventually to have every station fully staffed, we're still going to need another million dollars beyond that sometime. And, and this is one of those places where I'm going to say, if that's where we're trying to go, then we ought to be talking about it now, not just saying, well, we'll, we'll think about that when we get there. Now, if we're saying we're never going to provide all those Fados, then, then this works.
We can't use the 1.5 for any of this.
Well, we got a, that EMS building. Well, that is what we're talking about doing.
Right, so theoretically.
The 138, we'd be using it from the 1.5?
Yes, but that would push us back to then needing to take 1.5 from fund balance to pay for the Westminster water project.
But, but the EMS billing is every year, that project is one time. So we're looking at EMS billing every year. We, we, and we hired two EMS billing people for a reason. I mean.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not tying ambulance billing to the Westminster project. Now, that's only going to get paid one time, no matter what. It's not having.
I just want to point that out.
Impact.
Yeah.
So we took out two and a half. And now we're putting in 180, a million and a half, and another 320. So.
You took out 2.8.
Yeah, that's it. I apologize, say it one more time.
You, you reduced funding by 2.8. And this is why, and I said at the time.
Off the agreement.
You added 300,000 and, and started netting it out. And I said, don't net it out because they're just two different actions. And, and this is why, because it gets confusing when you try to think back to where we were.
And, and, and I just, I understand what you're saying. I understand what they must have said at the ESAC meeting. That million and a half is EMS money.
Yes, and I wasn't at the ESAC meeting last night.
Okay, but, okay, but that's what the emails told us. You're already getting 25 more million than billing from, so that money's spent. That, that's not like extra money that needs to be thrown at this. And uh, like you say, it, it changed the bottom line.
Well, it's extra money relative to where we were.
Yes.
Before that change.
Yes.
It's in. In terms of revenue line.
Yes.
Instead of just putting that money back into general fund, you know, to help defray other general fund costs and lower our general fund expenditures, they just put it on the bottom line and then it sort of died.
But, so this equation is now bringing us basically back to 2 million in the hole for FY '25.
No, because we'll, we'll move 1.5 from fund balance to pay for the Westminster water project, which right now we paid for because you had extra revenue on the bottom line. So that'll, that'll all wash out.
Yeah, I, I was gonna, but be, just to look at the big picture. I was going to propose 1 million in ongoing money and a million and a half for Agpres.
Hey, um, why don't you take money out of fund balance for the Westminster project? Okay, so that's not going to muddy the, the water anymore. Okay, now, um, before you tackle Agpres, I think, you know, make, this is all complicated, but trying to make it as simple as, as possible. If the funding for EMS remains where it is, there's going to be a significantly reduced level of service from what we had planned. If you want to add back a higher level of service with 16 Fados, we need to put in the 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars. And recognize that there's a ripple effect that if, if Michael is taking people who would have been floaters and using them as Fados, then there's an impact to ambulance EMS service. If you want to get back to where we have fully staffed Fados again, then we're back to you can't take the 2.8 million dollars out.
Exactly. And, and, and again, we might as well throw away the data. If, if we're saying we're going to blindly staff 13 stations, then that data's irrelevant. And, and that's where we're headed back to. I think, I think we got to phase it in a little bit and look at the data.
I mean, I, I, I feel as though this, that this, that's, that, that's what we'd be doing with the 16. And I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with the 16 and.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but.
But not the 28, I agree.
We added 1380, we added 180, we added 320, and we added a deputy chief. We're soon past the 2.8. Which, which is okay, as long as we know that's where we are.
The, the deputy chief is a separate decision. You know, I know it all.
No.
Well, it's not, it's not tied to the.
Actually, I voted for it because I said, if we're going to cut to 28, I'll talk about a deputy chief because that's more important. But where we're at now is everything's important. And we're going to make the 2.83.
Well, I understand. I mean, you know, and you and I had those discussions. Um, yeah, so I'm not trying to go back on that. But that was before the EMS billing uh, issue, which is a good, which is a good news story, I guess, in a way, that, that's, that, that much money is there. I, I did not realize it was going to be 5 million. I'll, maybe I should have, maybe I should have seen those numbers.
Yeah, 3, 3.5 was what was built in already. And then when this idea, we had, had this bank statement that showed more than, than we had heard previously. You know, we reevaluated and said, we, we think 5 million dollars is, is reasonable. So that 1.5 is what you added on Tuesday.
What determines that EMS billing goes exclusively to EMS? Is that a state law? Is that our rule? Is that?
Uh, it's kind of an accounting thing and your, your law. It's a, it's a, it has to be a legally restricted revenue. So you, well, you passed a resolution to restrict it. But it's one of those things where it's not because you made a choice, it's what we have to do.
Gotcha. So let me ask, I guess, more of an operational question, and this could be directed to the chief. So if we decided to use that 1.5, put that back into uh, to the DFEMs budget to fund the 16 Fado positions, um, rather than allowing that to accumulate at the bottom line, uh, Commissioner Carter was pointing about, well, what about the data? How do we, you know? Is it possible that, say, three months from now, if we do this, you say, okay, well, we really don't need this additional driver here and he can go back and be a floater somewhere else? Would you be able to move them around based on the situation?
Well, we could, but that's not going to go away. So right now in the FY '24 budget, we're providing minimal levels of service. So take out the funding question right now. Right now, between CC visa's funding and DFEM's funding, we have each of 13 stations has a medic unit. Three stations have two medic units. That's two people per unit. Then on top of that, every station has a Fado. And what that Fado does and how it ties into EMS, in my mind, the primary responsibility of that Fado is to handle that call in that community when that ambulance has a call and is transporting, in some cases, a two-hour turnaround time. So in the middle of tawny town, when that second call comes out, that allows even with that one person to respond with EMS equipment, an automatic defibrillator, oxygen, and the ability for him to do CPR. Now, the hope is that volunteers will also come to supplement that call, but the failsaf mechanism is we're getting at least one person to that additional emergency. And, and what you're, what you're saying, each station has one Fado, that takes four people.
Four people.
Right, correct. So our, in our proposal, by taking part of that billing money, and let's just say it's at 1.5 million, the 2.8 million's already been removed from our budget. That's the given. So our budget and the, I guess, the balance sheet would reflect 2.8 million dollars was deducted. Now we're taking 1.3 million out of money that's earmarked back to EMS. So that money probably on the balance sheet will show that we hired X number of paramedics with that. So there's no question. Whatever funding is there, we'll hire the 16 Fados, redeploy the 12 floaters. And based on what we calculated, in a worst-case scenario, we have enough money to cover if everybody takes all of their available leave time and all their sick time, we'll have enough revenue to cover that. And the probability of that happening, particularly with first-year employees, is probably not going to happen. But again, it's all probability. So. Now, is some of that one, is that 1380 up? Is that what you got there?
Yes.
Um, is part of that one-time money or not really? Because you'll have more training next year and next year and next year. Well, the, the training will be less because we hire people at a minimal level of training. They have a year during their probation, which is built into their year one funding per position that they have to get that training. So in subsequent years, the level of training, for some people, that may be as much as 100 hours. But in subsequent years, the maintenance that's required under mandates, state, local licensing, and things like that is going to be much less. So that level of overtime goes away. The turnad gear can be used for up to 10 years. So that's another 4,000 or 5,000 that goes off the, off the, the top. So.
And to fully answer your question, it's going to take us some time to see how things actually work. You know, at some point, we're going to say, X dollars a year of training is going to be the right number. But we're not going to know that until three or four years from now.
But, but the problem is, what we're creating right now is in fiscal year '27, we're going to have to raise taxes.
1380, just to answer your question simply, I believe, does not include the one-time costs of like the uniforms and the SCBAs and all that. I think it's another few hundred dollars per person. It gets us up.
So you don't think that's an in there?
I, that's my understanding. Somebody can correct me if I'm not.
Well, but.
1380, I thought someone told us, someone officially has to be 1.6.
Well, we've got 1.5. That's as much as we've got. So I, I mean.
Yeah, and we don't know any of those numbers exactly enough.
I know, but I.
So I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, thanks. And I mean, to say that I'm being conservative right now would not be accurate because I'm not, I'm, we're spending some money. But uh, yeah, this 1.5 is what we've got. I.
So out of curiosity, we had put 180,000 in for class training and upgrading positions. Does that need to remain in there because we're not going to be doing that at this point?
Well, yeah, you are, we are still talking about doing that because you're not providing enough Fados to fully staff every, every company. Now, as this continues to develop, if Michael has a plan that gets us where we need to go without staffing that way, then, then we can reevaluate that. But right now, the assumption is we will need to hire some Fados and we will need to have some other people who are capable of performing as, as Fados.
So how did, how did the 1380 go to 1,500,000?
We got that. Because like Roberto was saying, we don't think that fully accounts for all the one-time costs.
But then why isn't that one-time money? Now, now we're 200,000 in the hole this year and got to raise taxes in '27. We're, we're creating a problem.
Well, and, and my question from that, so this is a brand new cost that we're discussing right now, correct?
No, no, this was part of the plan before. It's, it's, it's taking 2.8 million dollars out that made this an issue.
The 2.8 million dollars out is done early on.
Right.
But this right now is a brand new.
It's adding part of that back. So the 2.8 would have, would have paid for all 84 positions that we anticipated hiring in '25. Then the board reduced it by 28 positions, taking it down to 56. And now the suggestion is to bring it up by 16 to 72. So it's somewhere in between, you're 12 less than the original plan from.
So, so we took out 2.8 and we're adding back 2 million.
Well, at least.
It's.
Well, no, because the, the 320, like you said, or the, the.
320 and 180 and the 1.
Is 320 one-time.
But still, so you.
And the deputy chief and whatever else we talked about.
And to Commissioner Carter's question about, you know, the one-time cost, again, I mean, we're, we're kind of doing this on, on the fly here. We'll need to figure out things over time. Uh, yes, all those costs won't repeat, but uh, they're not truly one-time costs either. When you buy turnout gear, you, you will have to buy it again. So we'll, we'll need to get to some better understanding of how do we have to think about this on an annual basis? But yes, there will be some drop between '25 and '26.
The other, the other thing real quick is that we have a list of qualified people that want to reclassify to Fados. So we have 10 people on that list. So the people we hire, which would be six more Fados under this proposal, would be considerably less because we have 10 that are already trained. So those 10 will be replaced with firefighter EMTs, which is a much lesser cost.
Is that leaving a gap for EMS? Then you have to hire.
Right, we're, the, the hiring for the EMS people is already built into it. And so this would be six new Fados and 10 retrain.
Right.
Well, you're still going to have 16 bodies. Oh, I understand, but I'm looking at the cost. Yeah, so you may be some variance of a few hundred thousand dollars. So if you take 86,000 times 16, I think that'll give you 1.38 or something along that line.
But then you have to add the one-time costs.
Yeah.
And, and.
So look at the bottom line. We now have Agpres where they can't look at one more average-sized farm. So add a million ongoing and a million and a half one-time to get them back to where we cut them. And what's that do with our bottom line?
That's what I mean.
Okay, but can I, just one, just going back real quick, chief, the, the cost, there was line item 35, that cost of 180 white, does that need to be a recurring cost? The, the, the line item 30, 35, the 180? Does that hap, why is that recurring then?
Okay, that's what we were talking about just a, a little while ago. It probably won't need to be 180. But you're not just going to train people today and then you're done, done forever. You know, people are going to come and, come and go. Uh, so that number will probably go down, but we really don't know exactly what to do with that yet.
But that was never in the budget to train people?
No, this just came out of your, that recent conversation, Chris.
There is training in the budget. This was specific to allow some EMTs to upgrade to Fados.
Which is one time.
Or separate.
Yeah, it's only one time if you get those people and nobody ever leaves.
Yeah.
Back, back. But, but to your, to your question though, it won't need to be 180,000 dollars a year. It'll be something less.
Okay. Okay, and it could probably be absorbed by the training budget if it's low enough number.
Maybe ultimately, yeah.
So I just, I want to put, if we decide to do this, we should put a footnote up there on 35 about, so we're sitting here this time next year.
Oh yeah, yeah, we're, we're taking notes on, on all this and there.
Thanks.
And, and all these details are things we know we need to work through. And this has been one of the difficulties as we've been going through these three years is it's not like we had, here's, here's where you're going to end up. What is this going to cost? You know, we've been developing this and changing it. And even now, just this last month, you know, we've, we've rolled through significant different possibilities. And, and with all of it, uh, we'll be in a much stronger position after we've seen how it actually works for a couple of years than we are right now trying to anticipate how it's going to work.
So the 16 fatal positions gives us a total of what as far as a number?
Seventy two.
Seventy two.
Fifty six and six.
Fifty six and the 16, correct, 72.
And we believe that that is a necessity to put in place now.
Well, that's the big question.
Well.
Yep.
I know, maybe I'm not asking you, I'm asking.
No, no, so based on what we're delivering today, to not have any of the FADOs at any of the stations means we're reducing service.
Right.
From what it is now.
Right.
No matter who's staffing it or where they're coming from is immaterial. The fundamental issue is, is right now every station has a FATO 24/7. We're changing where those employees are coming from. And so that's the objective is to maintain that level.
Okay.
So with this whole funding this year, we're not really cha, we're not adding anybody to the system other than that they're employees. So we're replacing historically CC visa employees to county employees.
Yeah, I realize it's counterintuitive what we're doing right now, but if, we wouldn't be having this discussion if, again, if it wasn't for the EMS billing. Uh, and it's just, that's simple. And.
But, but the EMS billing doesn't fund EMS.
Doesn't.
So it doesn't matter if it goes up. They're getting 30 million dollars EMS billing's five. So they're 25 taxpayer money. So if it went from three and a half to five, it would reduce the taxpayer money that goes into, it would still all go to EMS. They're getting way more than their billing.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so it's not like this is extra money.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was, I was kind of stuck is this, you know, we're able to do this because of the EMS billing, the 1.5 decline.
We up the revenue.
Yeah.
So that displaced the use of tax dollars. So you had tax dollars available in 25 that you didn't have. Now, part, part of the problem though is it didn't, it doesn't give you extra money in those years that are negatives. The negatives get a little bit better, but they're still negatives.
Yeah.
And so this, I will go ahead.
That's right.
By doing this though, um, we're not masking anything. We're not upping revenue saying this isn't really.
No, this, this isn't hiding anything. I mean, it's still, you still have the right, the right picture.
And you're comfortable with 72 at this point? Yeah, I, I, I'm comfortable with what we've, based on what we've done in overtime previously. And the fact is, this will be year two of our staffing. So the amount of training will be for the new employees, but the incumbent employees will be what I'll, uh, maintenance of effort training, which means these are the mandates you have to have every year, which will be less than hiring the new employees. So last year we hired, the current fiscal year, we hired 148 employees. So all 148 of those employees, we had to enhance their training a year. So now we're going to hire with the 72 employees, they'll be to that level that we'll have to do enhancement training, but that's half the number that we did this year.
Yeah, now, of course, uncertainty runs in both directions though. So we probably will not need as much training money each year. Yeah, and training money specifically talking about training EMA, EMTs to be able to be FADOs. But what goes along with that is we're pulling people away from EMS service, which is going to require overtime. We don't know what that's going to be, uh, but it's possible that will end up being more than we're, we're planning on. Uh, but again, we, we will just, we'll need some experience to say, here's how it's working.
And, and I understand that, but there's people watching today that don't think we should raise taxes. That's in there.
I've heard that.
And we got an extra million and a half, so in about half, 30 minutes, we spent it.
Yes, right.
And, and that's okay if we're all.
See, that, that's where I got confused.
You know, it's, it's, uh.
Yeah, and I'm not, I am absolutely not advocating for spending that money. My, my big point here is if you want the level of service back up again, there's going to be a cost. There's no free path to it.
But then I go back to the, the data so far shows less calls. So if we're going to fund 13 stations blindly, how are we going to adjust?
How's the data showing less cost?
The, the data, the spreadsheet we had showed less calls. Now, it's going to change. I understand.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right. I mean, I completely agree. If this, we should be looking, I mean, we don't have to look at it. We have, we're paying people to do that, but they should be looking, and you're right, the numbers are going down because you're having to have less people respond.
If we're, if.
Well, we can only give them what they need.
So the magic number, if it's not 16, is it 10? I mean, is it, uh, 12? Is it eight? Is it, you know?
Well, whatever you do now, I think it's fair to say that we do want to evaluate what's happening over, over time. And I, I think the board should be saying to the world, we're not saying this is the plan for, forever. You know, uh, things could, things could change as, as we know better, uh, how, how things are working. Now, part of it though, you know, it's almost like fixed costs, you know, if you decide a level of service, you know, whether you have 10,000 calls or 9,500 calls, probably doesn't change how much you need to spend to be able to respond to those calls. Now, if it goes from 10,000 to 2,000, then you've got something, but I don't think we're expecting that.
But we are increasing.
Yes.
Tuesday, we said 180 would get all the FADOs. Now we're adding a million and a half.
No, I, I don't, I don't think we were ever saying that. And I was a little worried that, that you might, we seemed that way.
I was worried too, but we said that'll make it work. That's how we came up with that dollar.
That was for the volunteer staffing, I believe.
Nope, no, 180 would.
Was cross training.
Cross training the current people, right.
And you, they would have done a, what is that called, Michael? First.
Handle first emergency. But what that would have done is when we were handling that first emergency, there's no backup. So as the second call comes in, whether our medic crews out on a fire, whether they're on an ambulance call, then there's nobody coming for a long time.
So at a given amount of funding, it was a way to try and accomplish it.
Yes.
That's why I keep harping on, we can't lose that there's a service level change when we choose these paths.
Well, it, pick one, Limeburg or my area. Did they have, they have all these people now? Yeah, right now, today at Limeburg Station, there's three people. Under our proposal, there'll be three people, but there'll be county people. So we are replacing, yeah. And again, I, like I say, Agpres, we've got them down to where they can't look at one more farm. For the current year or for the future?
Well, actually.
Let's, let's deal with this first. Well, I, I understand this, but.
Do we want to go with worse?
We're going to be over a million in the hole. We've got to make, we've got to balance it.
But so my thought is, where, where are we going with this right now?
Don't seem.
Because we're adding this additional cost. Are we satisfied in doing that and then moving on to another? Why are we, like we've done everything else, we've made motions, so, no, no. I, I just, I. You know, I wasn't expecting, maybe, maybe, well, I wasn't expecting this. And maybe I should have been, um, but this is just like a, a new twist in my, in my life now. Um, I don't know. I mean, I, I thought the cross training was going to provide the appropriate pass forwards.
It was a, an in-between way of getting it, trying to get it a level of service.
I thought it was an in-between way with a little bit legs to it that it can.
Well, that, but at the same time, it was reducing service. It was giving us options, so.
Okay.
But it was still reducing service.
I, I.
This would put us up to where we are. We're not enhancing service other than we're going to be able to guarantee that 24/7, all these units will be consistently staffed. And, and none of the fire halls will need their own HR and their. We're right, we'll take them out, out of that whole business so they can focus on recruitment, retention, getting people to the stations.
And, and, and then, and then by July 1st, the same with, when you said HR, you meant, and same with EMS billing, that whole procedure with the stations as well?
Yes, we'll be taking.
July 1st.
What, what will happen is, is in those seven stations that we're taking over the staffing, uh, by July the first, we'll be ready, or by the time, every time we put staffing in there. So July the first, some stations will have enough people to initially, uh, staff probably four or five of the seven stations. The others will use that 320,000 dollars, I'm going to call it gap money, to fill that gap till we have enough people hired. Now, we're in the hiring process now. We're advertising now for anticipated positions and we're going to have as many people ready to go. So as soon as the HR dates come, the first ones not till the 18th of, uh, Ju, uh, July, we'll be ready.
All right, so, so help me here. So the, the 1.5, let's say goes in and the 320 for the transition, but I'm still, now I'm lost about the 180 for the crash training. So if the 320 is supposed to be for the transition, then do we need the additional 180?
Yeah, because we're not fully staffing all the FADOs. So you're increasing the number of FADOs that will be in place to perform that job. But Michael would still be looking to make some EMTs qualified to be able to help fill in. So if you don't do the 180, then you don't get those people who have the cross train qualification, which again will be some impact on, on service.
Well then, provides flexibility. Then should the 1.5 be 1.4 or we're imagining? Because if some of.
1.5 is what you need for the 16. But the 16 doesn't fully staff all stations.
But we don't have 213,000 of it.
What was the thing?
Bottom line, we're in the hole.
Yeah, but.
So what are we going to cut?
So, well, hold on. I, I don't, I know where you're going with this, but I also just want to ask the question. All of the positions, they're going to be hired, they're, they're all going to be county employees under the county system. How much more is under CC visa?
Nothing. This will convert all the.
This will be the last.
This will be, this will take, by the time we have the hiring in place, which will probably take until the fall, there'll be no longer any CC visa funded position. So there'll be no need for any stations to be paying their own people, hiring people. Yeah, with nothing to keep them from hiring extra people, but that's on them. But, but that's why this is one time money for CC visa, because this is the last year.
Yes. And on your question about the 213,000 dollar negative, uh, I know this is not what you usually hear from me, but if, if this is where we end up and we've got a minus 213,000, I, I'm not worried about that.
That's all right.
I mean, um, yeah. You know, on property tax, that's a small fraction of a percent. We will, we'll up our projection by 213 and you'll be, you'll be balanced. Now, if it was 1.2 million dollars, I, I wouldn't be saying that.
And, and working with our new budget analyst, um, what we'll be doing is we'll be tracking that money. So as we try to cross train people, so we have depth in the system, certainly if that money isn't used, then you may be able to recover some of that. But we can't predict any of that right now.
So provided we can find the people to hire.
And that's the biggest thing is just. Because there's a thousand vacancies in the Baltimore, you know, Baltimore metro.
And for people watching and listening, we cannot control that. Um, but if things do go well this fall, we're looking at stations with county employees and, and our faithful volunteers.
Yep. But I think the message that we're going to send here today hopefully is, is that we, we do recognize the need and by restructuring the financing of this internally, more of our people are going to be in the right direction. And the people outside are going to say, hey, this is something that's going to continue to be sustained.
You know, in our, our budget decisions and our ability to fill the positions are really two different things for now at least. Now, if we budget for a certain number of positions and three years from now, we're saying, you know what? We can't fill these positions. Then just like we talked about with the roads positions, uh, a few weeks ago, we could have that same discussion. If we're never going to get the people, then maybe we shouldn't be budgeting for them. But right now I think we have to, we have to budget in a way that accomplishes what you want to and then find out that we can't get the people.
You're getting way too flexible. It's four o'clock, huh?
Okay.
So. Already moving forward with this or what?
Make a motion.
Yeah. Motion that we utilize 1.5 million dollars in EMS billing money to transfer to DFAMs to be allocated or appropriated for the hiring of 16 FADOs. Does that give enough flexibility in the motion that we're not using money for the wrong purpose? Good.
We got a second?
16 additional FADOs.
Yeah, that's the motion, 16 additional FADOs.
I'll second it. Motion a second, any more discussion?
Just where I. Where is? Still.
Farming's been to the budget. And I am going back to where you were. Good, good, how are you? What would you do with that? We're not going to.
Where's, um, where's the revenue for recordations? Are we comfortable with how much we raised that? To 615? And if we are, we are, but I wanted to talk about that.
Put on that motion about the EMS.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if we've not voted.
But, but he says.
Leaving out the second.
No, there was a second.
This is my.
And I just didn't want to, I thought maybe there was a new conversation. I just didn't want.
No, 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 no. It's like, you know, it's.
Don't miss.
If somebody would have told me we'd walk in here and spend over a million and a half in the first part of the meeting, I'd have said, oh, you're crazy. That's what I was in. And, and if we need to, we need to, but it's, uh, this kills any talk of we shouldn't raise taxes. I always still want to have that conversation some.
Yeah, but, but I mean, I, I know that, but let's get to it.
No, because you've got a, you've got the.
I mean, it, it is, it's sticker shopkin. I just. It is. I mean, it's sooner or later, we.
I should.
Here, how are we going to pay for stuff?
You know, and since you removed the 2.8, you've had, you've had a lot of feedback from people, which is why we're having this conversation. And I, I, I think, you know, the message you've been hearing, and you can agree with it or not agree with it, but the message you've been hearing is that's not going to work.
If we weren't looking at the additional 1.5 million in EMS billing, I wouldn't have brought it up.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is we're doing exactly what the anti, the raise taxes people are doing. We're saying this is a million and a half, let's carry on spending.
EMS and then the general front is.
You know, and, and that's okay if we're happy raising taxes.
I don't want to spend it, but I don't.
Oh, I understand.
Based on what we've seen the last two weeks, and I was right here when we proposed taking the money out of the budget and it doesn't really, it's going to work without these FADOs. It just.
Yeah.
It's causing a lot of
And, and to see.
stress and consternation.
And if we left it like it was, we'd have had a little bit of stations paying employees. If we'd left it like it was, we'd have had a little bit of stations paying employees. This gets rid of it. And to me, that's giant. I just, uh.
I mean, I understand the point about the EMS billing and that gave you confidence to do this, but they're not tied. Could they?
I, I feel they should be.
I mean.
I mean, that's where the money should be going.
I mean, if you said EMS tied to other EMS positions or something, that'd be one thing, but tie them to Fados, that's where I thought you were like, okay, this is a wash because, and that made sense, but.
Okay, you just have to think about it in, in two steps. Increase EMS billing freed up general fund revenue, which then allowed you to make this change for Fados.
The general run, fund revenue could be used to lessen air tech burden or.
Yes, and that's, that's something, that's what I said at the very beginning, that's what, that's what we're trading is flexibility in your budget for an increased level of service from where we were.
Yeah, now, if we do this, we can't even reduce taxes. Well, we're, and we're probably gonna raise them in two years.
No.
And if everybody's okay with that, I'm okay with that, Clark.
Okay, as long as, I mean, I, I said my piece on this and I, I don't disagree, especially if she's saying this is a requirement. And I've said this from day one, I don't question the experts making requirements. But as long as our eyes are wide open saying that this is $1.5 million that we're adding on to, bottom line, um, I'm okay with that.
And I will touch again on that in a few minutes when we talk about the taxes, cause there's some.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
I get you. Hey, you're welcome. Ted, you're gonna pay for this.
Just let you know that there is an erasure up there.
Get me through the next CCVs.
Good.
We can't make her pay anymore. Okay, um, again, back to Agpres. Based on their current funding available and the projects that are in process, they can't look at another farm. We took two and a half million ongoing out. Um. If, if we do it all one time, do, in fund balance, are, are we comfortable with two and a half million or how tight's fund balance getting now?
Well, we still have.
Uneasily.
Well, we're below 20 now, you know, cause you used 1.5.
So that's like any western project.
So what is it now?
We didn't vote on that though, but.
Yeah, we need to, we need to, we're not done with the.
Well, I don't think they voted on it the other way either. They said, let's do it that way.
He had a deficit.
Get them in our picture.
We did vote the other day though.
Just under 19.
Okay, so, so yes, it's available. Yeah, you, you can make it. You know, what's, what's comfortable is a fairly large conversation that we could have. But right now, it doesn't appear that we're using the one-time money to fix the operating budget, so it's more comfortable than.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't wanna.
Should, so.
The, the comfort level you always share is about 5%. Well, I've wanted to establish a, a separate 5%, which would be about what is sitting here, but we've never gotten to a point of the board acting on that.
Okay. So if I could real quickly, so we're looking at, based off the email that we received on 3/27, it's 440,000, 716 dollars and 28 cents. We're receiving an additional 446, 250,000 from MAF, which brings us to 866,966 dollars.
You know, I'm guessing that.
Um, that'll be in the relatively near future.
Okay.
I mean, I can't give you an exactly.
They never know.
Um, we also currently, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't think we've affected this, we put in 1.3 million in bond money, which then gets us to $2 million for MAF.
Uh, 1 million.
1 million, I'm sorry. So 1 million there. So, so you're looking at 3,866,966.28 cents. There's also an additional 500,000 that's coming in from Rural Legacy, which we used Rural Legacy this morning for that, uh.
Yep.
Uh, 61 acre, which of course it's all state money, it's not our taxpayers.
Right.
So that would give us roughly, let's see, what would that be? What did I say? 3.8 and then another 5. And then potentially in the fall, there's additional Rural Legacy money that'll be coming in. So you're looking at.
Bear with me, is 4.5, 4.7?
Yeah, somewhere in that, in that range. The big thing would be, we would have to utilize most of it through strictly MAF and Rural Legacy. And that would alleviate using taxpayer money from the county taxpayers versus maximizing state funds. Which to me would at least get us that 4 million and change to utilize for this next round of, of Agpres. That way we're not tapping into the 1.5, the 2.5, or whatever number we'd wanna pull out of just our actual, uh, fund balance.
So you sound confident of that. Is JP confident of that?
I had a conversation with Chris Hines this morning.
They're confident with that?
Yeah, there was enough comfort, comfort there. I mean, and the reality is, and I, I know most of us know a lot of different things on this program, not to be funny about that, but, you know, back when the 59th board was in place, that Agpres was shut down for a short period of time. There was an interruption of commitments. There were people that had had to wait three years to get into the program. We've been exceptional, I think, in what we've been able to accomplish. By no means do any of us wanna affect or, you know, lock that down in any negative sense. And obviously, we don't know what next year holds with the state. I mean, that's just being completely blunt honest.
Yep.
We don't know what'll come in from MAF. You know, maybe, at this point, they may say zero, may, they may change it within the year, we don't know. But I, I think it at least gets us, in a practical sense, not utilizing county tax dollars, but also allows this program to still flourish. That's just my thoughts.
But, so you're, you've got about 4 million. They show total projects and promise right now of 6.3.
Yes.
So, um, if we do 2 million, we'd be around the 6.
2 million one time.
Yeah, one time. Which is taxpayer money, but it's fund balance taxpayer money.
But they don't care where it comes from. All they care, not, not taxpayer, I'm talking about those going through the program. They just care that's free. Yeah, like, um, that would bring our fund balance down to 17 million. And probably as low as we're gonna wanna go because.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
Going into a dangerous. Don't wanna go anymore. Um. Is that the last major muscle movement that we see?
You mean.
You, you still wanna talk about as far as expenses?
I, we're gonna vote on the Agpres? I'm, I'm, I would, I'm not comfortable doing that this year.
You say you're not or you're?
I'm not. I'm just, I don't think it's the year to do it. We've got so much going on with that budget. And if we can get them enough money through grants, I mean, I couldn't follow half what you, half the stuff you were saying, sorry. But, uh, I just.
Even though it's one-time funds, not ongoing.
I just have a.
They're, they're probably the only entity in our budget that we took 2.5 million dollars out of.
Yeah, that's ongoing.
That was the first thing I did.
In at one time.
Right, I mean, I will agree with Commissioner again, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that at this time, especially given what I'm gonna propose in a couple of minutes or whenever we get to the discussion. But we are continuing, we are still giving them funding, we are continuing on with the program.
Commissioner said, we're not. We took away 2.5 million. We're not giving them funding. And, and I, and I respect what you said, but a lot of that's maybes. It might be in the fall, might be whatever. Most of it. And all I know is the Ag Board is currently thinking, we can't look at anything new because we don't have the money.
Even with, how much, how much do they get? How much do we have in there for Agpres right now?
440.
440 plus the 440, 446, 446 coming back.
We have about 2.5 million dollars. You have, you have a million dollars from the state, 1.3 that we use to match the state, and then some hundreds of thousands of Ag transfer.
For the coming year.
Facts. Yeah.
It's there right now.
Yeah, and that continues into, into the future.
And is that in this 6.8 or not?
I, I, I don't, I don't know.
No, that's not, that's, this is moving forward, that wouldn't be in the 6.8, cause these were just those properties. No, it's not within that list.
Uh, so.
Yeah, the, the, what was provided, the balances, our budgets that have already been adopted.
Correct.
It's not any of the funding that's associated with FY25.
So it's there.
So what's any?
So we have money allocated.
For all the, all the normal stuff that Ted just mentioned, the Ag Trans, Transfer Tag, the, the MAF match, the 2 million from Ben, the 1.33 from us.
The Rural Legacy.
Thank you.
Right, that, I don't, I don't need. So it's something more than 2.5 million dollars a year. And that doesn't count Rural Legacy, because we never know what we're gonna get from them. We don't, we don't even budget that.
Yeah.
We just deal with it once we get a number.
So, but that's a difference in opinion than what you're saying.
That's.
You're having a belief that there's only 400,000 there. Why is there such a difference?
That's what we were emailing.
I know, so why is there such a difference when we're told 400,000? But then you're saying there's 2.3 million, whatever it is.
The last time we asked this, when we were looking at properties, we were told they're slow paying a lot of these because they don't have the money.
For.
And I just think Agpres, for however many years, um, you know, this county brags about it.
It is.
And now we wanna cut them by 2.5 million.
And, and.
Of ongoing.
And that's true for FY24, you're right.
Of ongoing.
For 24, there, there, there is, but not as much funding as, as I guess is the proper way to say it, as they would like.
I think part of the confusion might be looking at how much funding is available against how many possible acquisitions there are. And even, I don't know, I don't know about that list, but sometimes the possible acquisitions, not all of them turning to.
Yeah.
To, to, they had actual easements. But one thing we, I think, I don't think anybody would say that we're willing to fund whatever. You know, if you get 10 million dollars worth of people who want easements, I don't think we're gonna say we're gonna fund 10 million. So there's gonna be some line where we're gonna say, here's how much we're willing to, to fund. And in some years, that might mean that they can't fund everything that people are, um, applying for. And, yeah, and we talk about that, and this is another level of service issue. But I would say this is a very different level of service than when we were talking about EMS. I think there's, you know, is an ambulance gonna show up is different than how many acres can we acquire.
Right.
This, this year. And the program will, there's no number that we're talking about that will stop them from acquiring easements. The only question is, how quickly are we gonna be adding to the total?
And, and did you guys see Chris Hines' email of 11/20? No, I'm not. The state is merging MAF fiscal year of '25 and '26. They will be allocating less than our normal 2 million.
Yeah, I saw that.
So another way to look at this is fiscal year '25 will be less than normal, and there will not be any fiscal year '26. Rural Age say we currently have about a million two. However, we have two applications that will, that will take about 700 of that. So we have 500,000 available for other applicants. We won't find out what if there will be funding in our next round of Look for a Legacy, which is what you said. Um, I, I just think we're, we're really banging on our Agpres.
No, I get that. And, yeah, I think I'd.
What's, what's the reluctance of using one-time money because of the budget?
So, so I'm just, just to play this out to next year, we get to next year, do we have to use one-time money again and keep using one-time money to, right?
We oughta go back to ongoing.
Taking it up from 1.3 to.
We took out 2.5 million ongoing.
Right.
Right. That's what we took out, and we're not even willing to give back 2 million one time.
When we get to this place next year though, is in, we'll be the same conversation, right, that.
I don't know, maybe.
Maybe.
I, I think, I think at some point in time, the, uh, the projects in process are gonna get smaller because they're gonna get harder to find, um, which is another reason why I think we, we need to take them as quickly as we can right now.
Yeah, and just to go back to how we took the 2.5 million dollars out, if you remember, uh, you were looking for places where you could make a choice to reduce funding. Agpres is just one of the few places where there was a, a noticeable amount that you could do it. And at that point, there was a decision, okay, yes, let's do that.
They were an easy target.
They were very easy.
If this, if, if we get all that and this 2 million doesn't get spent, it goes back into your fund balance.
Well, now this goes a little capital project, so they, they retain it. If it doesn't get spent in one year, so that's, it's still available for, for the next. Although, and again, to your point, it's going to get harder. You know, will we run into a time when they're not able to spend it all? You know, someday that's gonna happen. I don't know when that, that is yet. But historically, uh, we have spent what's available.
And we wanted to, la- last year, we reen, we wanted to reinforce our goal that we wanna get to 100,000 acres. Um, but again, if that's.
I'll make the motion to use one-time funding of 2 million dollars for Agpres.
I'll second. Any more discussions?
One or two, I'm sorry.
Two.
Two.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. So.
Voted down. Okay. Um.
I told you.
Do, do, I don't know.
They said the third time would be a charm. I said, I.
I, I was the first one to take that 2.5 out and, uh, you know, ongoing, cause I felt, and I still feel sorry.
So are we done?
I just wanna make a point and then with you.
Okay.
Fair clarification, point of clarification, we know this in this room about one-time funds and ongoing funds. But it seems like it gets pretty, um, mixed up, uh, in some people's minds, that why are you paying for a sheriff's headquarters and not for this or that? And kinda combining the one-time funds and ongoing funds, or saying, why are you doing it this year when you could do it next year or two years? And like Ted, you share, if you're gonna do it, then do it, you know, whether it's next year or the year after, put it in the budget. Um, so it's not about delaying funds. Um, it's important that these messages continue to get across because they're, they're tough decisions. And, but we're looking at different ways of using funds that are, you know, that are there. Uh, that are our taxpayers' funds, that are taxpayers' dollars. Um, ongoing dollars for Agpres was not appropriate, and we took it out. One-time funds, I thought was appropriate, it didn't pass, that's fine. Um, so it's not in there. But it's another way of looking at, you know, slicing the apple, whatever you wanna say. So that's all I just wanted to share. You've been waiting very patiently with your great ideas.
Well, everybody may not have too much patience with me after them, but we'll see. Public safety, we will be raising taxes in fiscal year '25.
No.
Well, so, uh, to that point, um, everybody remembers at the very beginning of our, our budget deliberations, there were a bunch of questions that I asked about certain things. And Ted, unless the answer has changed, please do correct me, right? So we're not exactly sure how the assessments, the increased assessments are going to affect us with the budget, correct?
Right. We, we, we can never know until it gets here.
And the, we have what, one more distribution of tax revenue in August, I think, or something? Or is it?
Um, we have one at the end of this month, actually just a couple of weeks. And then one more big one, but it's spread over June, July, and, and August.
Okay. And after, you know, this, the email and the information about, uh, emergency medical billing, uh, you know, we're, we're getting a better sense of that. Um, and, yeah, I can only imagine that as more, um, responsibilities absorbed into DFAMs, the amount of billing revenue will increase. I'm not sure how much or how dramatically, but it will be more than it is today. Um, we are certain, uh, especially after the decision we made about the 1.5. We know that we need ambulances and we need EMTs to be able to respond to medical emergency calls, have to. Um, I, and everybody remembers some weeks ago, I made the argument about how the recordation tax is the least. Um, I, and everybody remembers some weeks ago, I made the argument about how the recordation tax is the least, uh, harmful and the least offensive tax that there is. Um, I know that we are, uh, af- after our meeting the other day, I know it's too late to raise the recordation tax anymore. Um, but between the public hearing, uh, and everything that has ensued, I know we've all gotten, uh, emails, texts, calls about concerns from citizens about the increase in taxes. Um, I do not deny that the recordation tax has to be at six fifty, cannot continue to be what it was. The argument that I started making on Tuesday, uh, was that what about the property tax rate? Because that will hit more people, and that will be a harder hit for more people. So to my understanding, uh, the two cents in property tax revenue that's been, or property tax increase revenue that has been proposed is four point eight million dollars, correct?
Yes.
All right. So I've come up with a number of possibilities about how we might go about not having to increase the two cent tax, the property tax. Some of it is going to be one time, and it's not a perfect solution, and it doesn't help us in the long term. Um, some of the options, uh, are not going to be popular with certain people. Um, but I feel that, that, you know, it's important that we do try, or at least I propose to, to everybody, that we try to find a way to curtail that two cent tax increase. And I know that's going to massively affect the bottom line. So the, the simplest thing, um, and the only number I don't have at hand, what was the cost of the Georgetown extension? Was it one point seven, I think, or something? Something like that?
And you take it out and it doesn't change the two thirteen from two thirteen.
I, I'm.
It's irrelevant. And not that it's fiscally irresponsible. Well, now, I'll, I mean, we just sat here and added, I guess, to the budget, and now we want to cut taxes. We tied our hands an hour ago.
No.
No. You guys said, I want to raise taxes, let's add this. It's over. But go ahead. I mean, it's, I, I cannot advocate us doing something totally fiscally irresponsible. And why we'd want to cut a project to do smoke and mirrors on a budget.
Well, the, the idea is to try to delay certain things.
And look at the future years.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
We idiots.
I'm aware, but part of the thing is that we're not quite sure where EMS billing revenue is going to end up. We don't quite know how assessments are going to impact us yet. And we're still outstanding questions about tax distributions. Um, there's a lot that can happen. And like I said, you know, not all these are good options. Uh, there's going to be risk involved for sure. Um, but we can not, not talk about it.
On, on the revenue projections, you're correct. There's uncertainty about all three of those, those things. Um, now, on property tax and income tax, it's possible that growth will be less than we built in. It's not only a, a, an upside. Uh, but every year, this will continue to be true. We'll never know what those numbers are going to be until we actually experience it. But I think the thing I can very confidently say, there's not an unexpected twenty-five million dollars of growths in, in revenues. I could be wrong, but I, there's, there's no way I could responsibly suggest to you that we should be expecting that to happen.
Oh, and I would not, that's not the point of what I was getting at. I promise you, that's not where I was going with that. Uh, you know, if anything, this year demonstrated that, uh, the thirty million that had been, uh, accumulated each year for the last couple of years is not going to pan out for this year. So I'm, I take that point completely. Did we have a number on Georgetown Boulevard?
Oh, yes, it's just under two million dollars.
Just under two? Okay. Like one point nine something?
One nine seven.
All right. So again, given all the uncertainties about assessments and where things may end up, and, and given what we know about the economy, the financial situation of some of our citizens. Uh, to me, removing the two cent tax increase, removing Pine Run from this year and PFAS from this year and Georgetown puts us in a position where we do not have to raise taxes this year. It, the Pine Run Dam was one point, Pine Run Dam, we have one point five.
Real effect on us raising.
That's not what he's. It, on, in future years, it doesn't affect us, but in the current year, it does.
You know, it, it doesn't affect.
Hey, bear with me, just, I just wanted to understand. I didn't hear Pine Run, what?
Pine Run Dam.
Okay. Take fund balance. We did this, we did this a couple of weeks ago. Take them, take every project out, take every project out and look at the two thirteen and look identical.
Ted, can you? Okay, now, on these, these three projects specifically, uh, they're almost entirely funded by fund balance. So if we take out the expenditure, we'll take out the transfer of fund balance, the net effect to the bottom line will be zero. The budget will be smaller, but you got rid of a revenue and expenditure.
So Pine Run, removing that would not help.
None of those would help.
PFAS would not help, Georgetown would not help.
Right, because you're, you're funding them with fund balance.
Balance. Right. Now, as a one-time, as one-time, it would get us through this year. I know, I know, I know.
No, it would.
It does, it will have no effect on the bottom line, even if it's fiscal year twenty five.
Instead of going to the general fund, instead, I'm sorry, instead of going back into the, the, um, uh, I'm funding, I'm funding, I'm funding balance.
Yeah, so instead of the fund balance dropping to seventeen million, it would bounce back up to twenty-one million or something like that.
Yeah, and, right, and then we would apply that to the bottom line.
Right, so you take the one-time money and put that a lot.
Yeah, right.
And that's what you want to do, is take one-time money and put it on top of?
Well, it would get us through this year. It would get us through some uncertainties about, okay, well, um.
Now, I'm just taking my hand, not talking.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I want to be clear on what I was saying. It will have no effect on the, on the bottom line if you just cancel out the project. That, but if you want to use fund balance to balance the plan, then that'll fix the, the number, but doesn't fix the problem.
Doesn't right the long-term problem, right?
But you just said you didn't want to use two million in fund balance because the project was too scary. Now we want to use.
But that, that's.
Three times that?
But that's why, though. That was why, because I wanted to, to see what we, what we had with the, uh, uh, fund balance to try to get us through this year. Now, if that doesn't work, uh, if nobody's happy with that, I have a couple of other options we can try. Some of them are mixed. Some of them would be removing some of these projects, for example, um, uh, removing PFAS and Georgetown. And this is not going to make anybody happy. Um, you know, we just have this discussion about, you know, moving EMS in the right direction. We've held a lot of departments to last year's level of funding and were as close as possible. In a lot of cases, we've given partial increases as a way to step us in the right direction. Now, I know, uh, and I'm going to bring down a storm here, but, um, public school funding. We've allocated six million dollars for that ongoing from this year on. Now, if we're moving them in the right direction, all right, I know they're trying to get ahead of the teacher salaries and the increases. So if we reduced some of that, that would help us get to a point where we could use fund balance and then we wouldn't have to worry about.
We cannot use fund balance responsibly. And we sit there and let CCPS do negotiations with their bargaining units based on our word. My word is not zero. Maybe your word is, but I'm sorry. You guys sat here and added money today, raise taxes, and let's go home. I mean, it's, this smoke and mirrors is, so now we're going to cut care of county public schools? And make them go back into renegotiation with their bargaining units?
Kenny, I'm looking at every possible option that we have.
They, they aren't options. They aren't viable options. They, they were being good things to discuss a month ago.
Well, look, all right, um.
And I'm probably tired and irritable, but, and I'm.
Every, can I, can I, can I interject?
Yes, shame on daddy. It's some of this stuff, uh.
All right, so let's, okay.
And, and again, this used to be my expression, my frigging grandkids know more about a budget than we sat here and did.
Right.
Oh, my gosh.
So let's.
If one of them said, I'm taking my tax return and do the first payment on a car, I'd smack the shit out of them.
Stand up to the breasts.
Let's remember that everything Commissioner Vigliotti is suggesting is in the context of that we really don't know where revenue is going to go. And I still don't understand why in the world it would go down when, I can tell you right now, in the southern part of the county, assessments are up for renewal, and we're going to get hammered down there. Um, and it's also in the context of not having to raise people's property taxes. I think that's pretty important. And all the things, and all the things he's going to mention have been mentioned before in the last eight weeks.
And I say we had budget. If you don't want to raise taxes, don't add anything to the budget. And we sat here and added, and I'm comfortable with what we added, but, but to, to sit here and say we're going to do smoke and mirrors.
I don't, I just don't see it that way. I just, I mean, I understand what you mean, but I just.
Ted, the, um, property tax, an increase is in the budget, correct?
Yes, um, two cents.
How much?
For the, the next, um, assessment, we have fifteen percent built in, fifteen. Then we do have it dropping off after that, I, I think to, to five or six.
But for this year.
Right, because we, we believe that, uh, South Carroll has not fully caught up to what we've experienced over the last three years.
That I mentioned.
But we think after South Carroll, we probably are caught up unless something else changes.
I mean, you just said, is what you just said, it's in the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So you, you, you said.
Was that?
Yeah, it's accounted for. What your, your expectation, which I agree with, is accounted for and is already in the budget.
Yeah, and if, yeah, and if we raise property taxes, people get hammered even more. That's, that's what's going to happen.
But.
But the money's in there.
How much can they go up? Because there's a limit. If, if it goes up twenty percent, it's phased in.
Five, five percent a year because of the homestead.
So that's all it can go up. And I understand, but I, I'm just.
Going back to these projects, Georgetown Boulevard is in the master plan. It's a safety issue. It's an opportunity for growth and development and more revenue in the southern part of the county, without a doubt. Pine Run Dam has been assessed, I don't know how many years ago, for, uh, it's, um.
Pine Run Dam, it was under a, an order by.
Again, by feds.
To make.
By those feds.
Repairs.
Yeah.
Um, upgrades, repairs.
Yeah.
Or to meet the current standards of the one every year storm.
And it's, uh, yeah, it's a hundred year storm, right. And it's, uh, AECOM, I think, is the ones who have that, have been working on that for quite some time. PFAS, I understand, but again, i- it's there, and we've got to deal with it. Um, so, you know, it's kind of like, nobody wants to talk about climate change, nobody wants to talk about PFAS, nobody wants to talk about certain things, but this one is there. And we are going to get significant mandates on what to do with it. So having money put aside, you know, not in operational, but put aside, I think is the responsible thing to do. I don't think any one of these will adjust anything that we have up there. That's why I'm like, I understand the challenge, but, but these are important projects. Some are the vision of the county. You know, the, the, the growth of the county, the vision and master plan, the safety with the Pine Run Dam. Uh, you know, and PFAS is safety, so.
And I, I take those points, and I don't disagree with them. I'm not saying no, I'm saying not now.
And with the schools, the Board of Education, they unanimously voted to approve their budget request coming to us. So when they unanimously do that, I, just like I had with Chief Robinson, I'm going to listen to what they had to say. And we got it down to six million from this ten point eight that they asked for, that they all approved, every one, every five of them. And that's important to me. And we got them down to six. And they said, okay, we can meet all our negotiating and bargaining things that they do, and we're satisfied. If we make any adjustment underneath that, it's going to open up just big can of worms, uh, for them and a whole lot of things in front of us, in front of them, so.
This, this would have all been great discussions two months ago. But like I say, we sat here and add money, and then we say, we owe a type of people not to raise taxes. Well, let's, let's stay all night. Let's go back through and I move, we take a million and a half out of EMS. I move, we take, uh, a hundred sixty-nine out of the library. I move, we take a million out of the schools. What the hell's chaos? Um, let's, let's cut costs. That's how you balance a budget.
Cut. We've been working on it, that's for sure. Um, and if you want to go there, Commissioner Kyler, then I will go there. Um, I would not agree to put six million dollars under the budget for the schools. Four of us voted to propose this budget. You only need three to pass it. And so if that's the case, then you have your three, and you don't need me. So that's, I'll be a no vote on the budget. You have your three votes, and we're good to go.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what else we do.
As I'm, I'm not sure, what, what percentage of five hundred and forty-three million is four point eight million? Can somebody do the math for me? I try, I don't want to mess this up.
Well, it's going to be a little less than one.
A little less than one percent.
It's point zero, point zero eight percent?
Point eight.
We can't, we can't find point zero eight percent to cut out of this budget?
Point eight.
Point eight? We can't find point eight to cut out of this budget?
Like I said.
I mean, that was a.
Let's start.
It was a viable suggestion, and the, and, and to say that we didn't talk about these things for the past eight weeks, I mentioned all these things.
I understand, but we didn't make any decisions. It's today's, it's, it's unconscionable to make those decisions a day. But like I said, we want to cut.
Well, I.
Let's cut. We just, we added a man and a half. We didn't cut.
So where.
And that's fine.
Where do we want to cut with that in mind, four point eight million dollars out of the operating budget? So that's what you're looking at. And I just don't know where to go.
Well, let me propose something if I, not that, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. If I could propose something just for a minute, I understand there's a lot of discussion here with all of us. Why don't, and I'm not trying to drag this out today, why don't we take five minutes, come back and look at this?
Second?
Recede till four forty-five?
Yep.
Can it?
That's fine.
Mr. Kyler?
We were going to motion to recess for fifteen minutes.
Second?
For fifteen or five?
For five, fifteen's fine, whatever, I mean, whatever anybody wants, ten minutes, whatever.
Somebody.
So what's the motion?
Four forty-five.
Four forty-five, okay, four forty-five. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. So we need to find four point eight. New Orleans, PFAS is two New Orleans. I'm going to make the.
So, so you're okay with recordation?
I'm okay with recordation, though I'm, I'm trying to avoid the property tax increase.
You need to find it in the operating budget. Looking for it in a different budget doesn't help.
Well, it helps us today, and it helps, it gives us time to see how other things found its place, and that was where I was coming at with the assessments, et cetera, the EMS billing revenue.
Substance are in the budget.
Taxes, how much are we totally talking about with our taxes? You said it earlier, recordation and property equals.
Nine million.
We.
The shot.
The shot.
Commissioner Vigliotti, on, on property tax, even if the assessments come in higher than what we have projected, the homestead tax credit won't increase our revenue beyond what we've already projected.
So.
And the assessments could be fifty percent, and it's not going to help the, the bottom line in, um, in the first three years.
Okay, so. Cause Mike, you, you said four point eight, we need to find, but that was four point eight just from property tax, not nine million with all the tax.
Yes, and I.
Are you satisfied with the recordation at this point?
No, I'm glad you asked that. No, no, I'm not, but I'm willing to work my tail off to get to find that four point eight.
But it wouldn't be four point eight, it'd be nine. If you, it's not, it, it, the recordation and property is nine.
Yeah.
So are you saying now our target is nine?
No, it's four point eight for me, personally.
So if it's four point eight, you've got to be then saying you're good with one or the other.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the efforts to try to re- remove property taxes. I will work with anybody here to do that. I'm still opposed to recordation, but that's okay. Um, that's not, I mean, it doesn't mean I'm not going to work to try to save people some money. So, I mean, a fair question. So you probably don't like my answer, but.
No, no, that's okay. It's just, I, I don't want you to be under false pretenses that four point eight is all of the tax revenue. It's not, it's half in tax.
That's correct, yes, I understand, I understand. I'm glad you asked that, and I was going to make that statement.
Good.
And, and, uh, again, I, I'd like to see us find one percent of this budget to cut. And I think it's worth mentioning that, I mean, before we even added, before we even added the additional funding for FEDAs, we were still looking at deficits out to FY thirty. We've still got a spending problem that we're going to have to confront no matter what. And last year, I sat here at this chair and meant, talked about that. I've talked about that for the last eight weeks. That's not important right now. What's important is that we can find, as Republicans, I'm hoping we can come together and find some way to reduce this budget by point eight percent, turn out the lights and go home.
Ted, I have a quick question for you. You were talking about the assessments earlier, and obviously they go up, what is it, five percent a year for the homestead? It'd be. It'd be capped at five. Capped at five. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I know you're the expert on this far better than I, that would only be, that is only for personal home property, so anybody that had to say a second or third property, or if it was commercial, that's not capped at that five percent.
Yes, that's true.
I'm not suggesting that's gonna make up a massive amount of the revenue needed, but that would at least, there is a differential.
Yeah, yeah, you, you're, you're right, and what I said to Commissioner Bigliotti, what was incorrect, although I, like you said, I don't think it's enough to.
Sure.
Substantially change the pic, the picture, uh, but yeah, if somebody has a second home, or we're talking about commercial property, and, uh, things come in above fifteen percent, we would see some increase for them.
So if they were to come in and say twenty-three, we would get the additional, what is that?
Yes.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I mean, from the get-go, there are a few things cut, like Agpres, you know, I recommend cutting, there's a handful of others, and I know, I think we all tried. Um, Joe, you had some thoughts about where you wanna cut?
All right, so I, again, I know it's not a good option, and I know it only gets us through this year. If we removed PFAS, that's two million dollars out of the four, that gets us two point eight closer to where we need to be to get to the four point eight. So we're down to two point eight if we take out PFAS. There's a lot we still, we really do not still know about PFAS. We don't know, uh, the, the PPM totals, we don't know what the cleanup effort's gonna be involved, and I understand that, that, you know, we are, um, uh, you know, trying to hedge our bets about what's to come in the future. I understand that. But we, you know, last year we took nine million dollars to plug our budget to get us through last year. This year we're down to four point eight. So if we get the, if we take PFAS out and put that into the four point eight, that leaves us with two point eight that we have to find to not have to raise property taxes.
Okay, before you continue down that road, I think there's a, if that's, if that's your plan, there's a quicker way to get there. You don't really need to look at eliminating one-time funding. If, if in the end we're gonna use one-time funding to make the up twenty-five balance, then you can just go directly there and say, uh, take four point out of the revenue, four point eight out of the revenue, and put four point eight of one-time money on the bottom line. And I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm just saying mechanically, that will accomplish the same thing you're trying to do.
So if we did that, what would that do to our surplus fund? Or would, what number would it be?
From down to twelve or so.
Fourteen, uh, be.
Thirteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Okay.
But that's still not getting us rid of all the taxes. If we wanna get rid of all the taxes, it would get down to nine million.
I've, I've said that, you know, like Commissioner, and I can live with the recordation, but if we can save people the property tax, that's the, that's the goal.
Don't, I apologize, don't speak.
And, well, no, I thought that was what you said.
Well, I thought we took a recess to look at the operating budget and eliminate costs. I mean, the first day here, you cut two and a half or three million, I cut two point eight, the sense put some of it back, but that's how we make the budget balance. PFAS is irrelevant. Like, like Ted said, if we wanna lie to ourselves, then let's just, let's just say, let's fake it and do it.
You mean the whole four point eight?
Whatever, I mean, it's, 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 we sat here and added to the cost. We need to generate revenue to pay for that, and we did, and we've got the budget where it'll balance. Um, I, I don't know what else we do.
But we'll use the four point eight as our fallback position. Yeah, I, I, and I understand, I un.
There is zero logic in that. It. And, and I think I said the same thing last year, and, and, uh, like I say, if, and when we look at, we're gonna, if we don't watch it, we're gonna raise taxes twice, and, uh, now we're gonna raise them three times.
Well, if we did take PFAS, I know what Ted is saying about the, the whole thing about the general, the surplus, but if we didn't remove PFAS and just use that rather than another two, PFAS wouldn't be in there. And again, I, I know, I get it, this gets us through this year. We, we scrambled through last year. We thought we were heading in a pretty decent direction this year, and, you know, we, yeah, again, the recordation tax is gonna be six fifty. I don't have an argument with that. It's the, if we can try to find a way to avoid the property tax, I know I keep repeating myself, but that's my goal here, is to try to avoid having to raise the prob.
Got a suggestion. Public Safety and Corrections, the total is eighty-six million. Take five percent out of that, the budget balances. If we wanna cut the budget, let's cut the budget.
How much that, how much would that remove though? You're talking about four point eight, but that, where's it gonna come from? I mean, from.
Yeah. I have no idea. I have no idea. It can take off a million and a half that we just added. There. Take off.
You, you understand the, the argument about PFAS. It's not about PFAS. It's about your intent of not regarding PFAS, but your intent of one-time funds being taken away and putting it on the bottom line.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not a PFAS issue, it's a use of one-time funds.
Yes.
That's what you're, like, it's mechanically working.
Ultimately mechanically.
What we've done to date, and again, going back, you know, the, the funding reduction for fire EMS, the two point eight million, the two point five million taken away for Agpres, the one point six million redu- uh, deduction of the reserve for contingency, um, I mean, these are all significant numbers. Now, the big significant number and increase was the six million in school funding.
Right.
But that was almost half of what they requested in the first place. So, again, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna second guess them when they say this is the bare minimum that got them through all negotiations, you know? And the only way we can do that and everything else is figure out where revenue's gonna come from, but it's gotta be, to me, ongoing revenue. Now, that's not, I'm not, I am trying to sway you, but it's an ongoing revenue issue, because if not, alls we're gonna end up doing is we're, we're building this cliff to it's gonna get to a point where it's gonna be so steep, we're not gonna have the fund balance to mask that cliff. And that's gonna be a very dangerous situation where it'll be a significant sticker shock in taxes, and we don't wanna go there, because some of the counties and jurisdictions are there. They are doing like ten cent increases and five cent increases, and we don't wanna go there. Um, we don't have the industrial base that some counties have, uh, but we're building it with the Georgetown Boulevard, you know, expansion going into that large BD property. That's gonna be some significant revenue once all done in ten years or whatever it's gonna be. Um, but in my mind, I'm just looking at, looking at the ongoing dollars that we need to be focusing on.
I understand that. I, I do not dispute that we, you know, there, there's a long-term implication to this. I do not dispute that whatsoever. Um, but.
Okay, I.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I wanna go back to CCPS budget real quick. I know we had, gave them six million, but I also remember that they had their own fund balance that was, I couldn't remember the exact number.
They can't fund any pay raises with fund balance.
Okay.
So it's irrelevant.
Well, I mean, but they have other costs other than pay raises, so.
Eighty-five percent of their budget is salary. They don't have other costs.
So, that leaves fifteen percent. I mean, their budget's pretty big, so.
Cut to fifteen percent and a half. I mean, it's, I, I'm sorry, but it's five o'clock, I'm supposed to be someplace at six, and I, I just can't take any more illogical statements.
But Commissioner.
No, they, they, if we take away a million, they need to renegotiate all their contracts, period. That's, it's that simple. I, I did their budget for.
Okay, I understand. I'm just, I just, I'm trying to reconcile that with the fact that they do have a pretty sizable fund balance of their own, so why wouldn't there be any, uh, room for?
They're probably gonna use that, I don't know what they voted, but they're, they're gonna use that for the four million we took.
Well, the, well, the four point eight that we did not fund. It's how we didn't take, we, that we did not fund.
And the only reason I bring this up is because, I mean, in, in my discussion, in our discussions with them, and I agree with the fact that you know their budget way better than anybody sitting here on the board, I mean, they were looking at a sizable increase per people next year, so that was gonna help out immensely.
Next, next.
So if we're trying to nail down some ongoing cost reductions, I, I, I guess I'm still not convinced we couldn't take that six million down to something else, because they do have a fund balance to pay for certain.
Fund balance cannot pay for salaries. Question, and I don't know if.
And, and your fund balance, I apologize, just real quick.
You got.
I believe is to use to offset the four point eight million that they asked for that we are not funding.
It's probably being for part of the HVAC going.
If, well, they asked for, you know, their request was ten point eight million. We ended up giving them six million. So that four point eight, they would expect, I would expect, the requirement doesn't go away, so they're gonna use their fund balance, they're gonna be as innovative as they can to fund part of that, not being able to all of it, but they're gonna fund some of it, so, yeah. I don't think, I know what you're saying, I don't think that can offset the six million, 'cause I think that's the bare minimum.
Yeah, and I'm not.
For us to provide them for the negotiations of the bargaining years.
So is, is three million right now the deficit that we're in for the current year without the two cent tax increase?
Well, no, that's.
I'm sorry, where, where are we at?
So the two cent tax increase is pulled out, and then for right now, we're eliminating the funding to PFAS, but keeping that surplus funding in, so that.
Our new bottom line is over three, okay. All right, I'm just gonna go for broke here. I'm gonna make a motion to remove the two cent property tax increase and plug it with three million forty-six thousand six dollars from fund balance.
If I might, before we go there.
Okay.
Um, real quick, I know there was a question raised about funding the school system. Yes, we put in the six, supposed to be ten point eight if memory serves. Um, trying to find this to make sure I'm being completely factual here. I believe, and I'm trying to pull this up really fast while I'm talking, I believe that they actually did remove the three million for the computer upgrades, if I'm not mistaken. I'm just pointing that out.
They're, they're gonna be using the four point eight to offset what that wasn't used, and that, you're, I think where you're going, 'cause what they talked about technology.
Correct.
And they were going to use that four point eight million to fund the technology. They can't use it for people.
Oh, no, I understand.
That's where, that's where we're doing with them.
Might have become three or threesome, because I think they decided they'd put off some stuff.
They could put off some of it to following years, but the six million was the bare minimum for the people that.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
And the four point eight was integration for that, that laundry list, and then there was a couple lines that were technology, and, uh, that's what that four point eight, they're gonna use their fund balance for.
Apparently it states here in the Carroll County Times that they're not doing that this year, and they're gonna push it out to a future year. Uh, let's see, states they're not buying replacement laptops at the elementary level, and that they're gonna be pushing that out, smaller reductions will be made in the school system's budget due to the four point eight million dollar deficit.
Right.
So.
They're not, they're not funding all of it.
No, no, I understand, but I, if memory serves, I don't have the document in front of me. I thought the technology was three million.
There was two, there was two lines with technology that I remember. One of them, they're pushing back, like you just said, the other, they're using their fund balance to fund. Um, but the six million, my understanding was the people.
No, and I, I recognize that.
And since it is the people, regardless, the fund balance cannot offset.
Correct.
Costs for people.
I just got a message, uh, we're using fund balance to fund four point eight million in technology. Okay, then the Carroll County Times got it wrong. What's that? I said, then the Carroll County Times got it wrong. Um, yeah, they, that's about their batting average. I just, this came from the school system. That's fine. I'm not debating it. I'm just, I'm just telling you what I just read, that's all. So, I understand. I got. So like I say, I, I've been there when eighty-five per. I get it. It's probably the same from somewhat true for us, when eighty-five percent.
Also, I will repeat my motion to remove PFAS and then to use surplus revenue to balance the budget with three million forty-six thousand, whatever it was, three million forty-six thousand six dollars.
The blessing for PFAS on property tax.
Yes, I'm sorry, and.
Do it separately.
Eight.
What's your motion? Is it separate?
It's okay. The motion is to remove the property tax at two cents, remove PFAS and use surplus fund revenue to balance the three million forty-six thousand six hundred six. Recordation stays the same. I mean, the, the six fifty.
Do we have to have a second for a discussion? I'm not sure how that works. Every, this motion just fails.
If there's no second.
Would happen.
No cycles.
Okay, maybe you might wanna break, okay, you might wanna break those apart, but.
Wait. Motion to remove PFAS from, um, CIP.
Second.
And then to do what you want to do, what goes along with that is the fund balance would remain in FY twenty-five.
Uh, yes, keeping a surplus in FY twenty-five.
Yeah, it's, I don't understand why we wanna mess with PFAS again. Like I say, if we just wanna do something totally financially, they're irresponsible, just apply fund balance and move on. Why, why screw up both budgets? Ted, what is the total fund balance right now? Just out of curiosity. I, I've lost track. Ted, what's the total fund balance right now?
Heidi, will go there?
Jesus.
I thought it was around twenty, a little under.
Not counting if we need to put this.
Okay.
The, we're cutting nose split to face. PFAS is something that needs to be addressed. We are beginning to have a plan and putting funds and resources towards it, and we will be caught off guard if we don't have the funds available to doing this. It's in, you know, the CIP, it's where it belongs, and we are working with the state, you know, with MDE and others on how to mitigate it, how to find it, how to capture it, how to remove it, for it to be destroyed. It's a major step process. And I just believe that we should not be doing this because it is not, I mean, I'm looking at the quality of life for Carroll County, and PFAS has shown that it has, you know, been unhealthy for the quality of life of Carroll County. So we're, if we're gonna be good stewards, then we should not be doing something like this.
I mean, we do have some money allocated already for PFAS, I think, correct?
Three million.
Three million? We still don't know how the class action lawsuit and everything will turn out either. We don't know.
No, but, oh, again, I mean, to me, it's not so much taking risks on not knowing something, it's more like really taking gambles, because we really don't know.
That's true.
You know, we roll the dice, it could be snake eyes seventeen times in a row. It's always a gamble, you know? We just don't know. And class action suit and the tax, the projections, who the heck knows, you know? Can't do a trend analysis.
Right.
If you could, Ted'd be showing it to us, right? You can't, you think of tax.
And Commissioner, I don't disagree with anything you said. Uh, for me, I guess, uh, the gamble is taking the gamble on behalf of not raising property taxes on citizens this year.
But meanwhile, at some point, that property tax is going to increase into a place where we don't want it, and it's gonna be very expensive. And if we wait and make it to that point, it's gonna be a very, very difficult time for property owners.
I.
And I don't wanna see that happen.
The economy. We get a lot of emails thanking us, thanking us for.
We get a lot of emails thanking us, thanking us for raising property taxes. It's not, it's, this timing is so foolish. Almost everybody has now assumed we're raising property taxes. Um, I, I don't understand. So $10 a month, we wanna do something fiscally irresponsible.
The economy may improve early in the course of the next year. There's a lot that we're gambling on. I mean, why do we have, and I'm, you know, why do we have surplus revenue if not to use it in a time like this to see if we can tide our citizens over?
Get surplus revenues one time.
For one more year. Right.
We're trying, we're trying to apply it as ongoing money. That's not responsible. No. It's all it does is push the can down the road.
So when we walked in here this afternoon, we were still staring at a $7 million deficit in FY28. That's July of 2027 and a $21 million deficit in FY30. And spending is gonna be increasing by $80 million in that period. So we were still in a tough spot walking in here. Um, so raising the property taxes wasn't gonna solve much of that problem. Um, I just, I'm just convinced that five Republicans sitting around a table can come up with 0.8% of a budget to cut. I'm still hopeful.
But like I say, let's cut. I, I.
Okay, well, I'll.
5% on a public safety.
Okay, I, I don't, I'm sorry.
I mean, do it. But where are we at?
Well, my motion, I had my motion for the PFAS and it had a second.
Yeah, there was a second. There was, there was a second, right?
Yeah, you were the second, I think.
You were the second.
And, and to leave the.
They forget.
We need another motion to recess.
And then to leave the fund balance in FY25.
Correct.
So your motion is still PFAS or just fund balance again?
Well, right, to, to remove PFAS and leave that in the fund balance for FY25.
Just not responsible. Takes away quality of life for Carroll County.
For doing it to every citizen in Carroll County.
We say safety, security, public education, quality of life, all those great words we use. This is actually a tangible.
So if we put PFAS back in then, if we put PFAS back in, the total amount in FY25 would be negative, would be what, 4.8 without the property tax? It'd be a little?
Want me to take both of these out?
Uh, well, cheap, we want, I, I wanna see the property taxes zero still. But if you take PFAS out, what does that do to the bottom line?
Take it out.
I'm sorry, put it back in. I, I apologize. Yeah. Yeah.
That's just five.
Right.
It just goes down to 3 million because it's one time.
Right.
But it still puts us in a deficit across the board. So if you're gonna do that, why not take 5 million one time there and 4 million for 26 and 9 million for 27? And like you said, take risk associated with 28.
Well, even, even if we're gonna do it for 25, I would still argue.
I'm lying. I'm kidding. I'm.
26 and 27, we still ought to look at.
I don't agree with what I said.
I apologize. I. Sarcasm.
What's his name?
Well, I agree with you disagreeing with yourself then.
Yeah, that.
Well, I'll ask, I know Commissioner Rossi and Commissioner, uh, Kyler are not comfortable with this approach to use fund balance to try to balance the budget this year. Can I ask Commissioners Garen and Commissioner Gordon how they feel about using fund balance to get us through this year? I know it's not, it's a gamble. It's a gamble.
It's not a gamble. That's irresponsible. It's reckless. It's, uh, I, I cannot believe we said we wanted to start budget early. We talked about cuts and here we are, an hour past the last day. And why didn't we just do something irresponsible in the beginning and save ourselves a lot of time?
Well, I'll tell you, I, I can explain that completely. When we.
Let's, let's add back Ag Pres, let's add back another major schools. Let's get, do 10 billion of fund balance. Why not be totally irresponsible?
Commissioner Kyler, when we began this process and we started going through, we thought we were looking at a negative $7 million deficit. That ended up being over 12.
Yep.
We were not anticipating that.
Oh, I'm.
Right? And, and so if you, I mean, that, that's why, you know, we were thinking, okay, well, maybe we could absorb it. Maybe we could find a way forward with maybe just the recordation tax and, and between the cuts that Commissioner Rossini has referenced and that you've referenced and, and yes, some things have been added into the budget. Yes, I get it.
I anticipate that. I mean, we have two major, we got the schools issue, we got fire EMS, we, I mean, yeah, I, I expected this to be a really, really ugly situation and it proved itself.
Oh, I, I.
And that's why, the cuts, I apologize, but that's why some of the cuts I'm making, uh, years ago, maybe I should have looked at making those cuts in Ag Pres and having that force that I didn't. But no, I saw the writing on the wall and I'm saying, okay, what else can we cut that we have flexibility? I mean, we got, um, uh, your non-Carol program. We is one to a vigil that proved the non-Carol really shows its value. We have veterans program, we have transportation, we have Ag Pres, you know, we have some, you know, things and we looked at them and we've made determinations not to cut the non-Carol or the drug court and stuff like that because of the value it brings to our culture and our community. Taking something like this PFAS goes against that. Taking one-time funds and masking the problem that we have goes against that. It gives us a false sense of security that we've been doing for I don't know how many years. And it's like enough already. Let's keep our, you know, white boy pants on and say, you know.
And I understand and, and you're leaning more wide way than the, oh, the other three. Republicans ought to make this. I haven't had one conservative Republican tell me to avoid taxes by using one-time funds. They've said, cut the budget, cut this, cut that. Um, it, it just, I, I just, I, I can't even believe this. Well, I, and again, uh, we are not meeting early to talk about budget because it's a waste of time.
Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Garen, Gordon, please, you know, I could really use some thoughts about what you feel about one-time fund.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're, I know, I think we're having a, I actually think we're having a pretty good discussion about this. I, I, so, and we, it's been cordial. Um, I, I don't feel bad about taking PFAS out of there for this year. And one of the main reasons is, and this is anecdotal, but every time I open the Wall Street Journal, the EPA and the federal governments keeps changing their position on PFAS. They keep coming up with PFAS that has PFAS in it. I, I mean, I don't know where they're going. We've got $3 million in there now. Um, is that ever gonna be enough to do anything the EPA tells you to do? Probably not. So I'm, I'm completely comfortable with having that in there. And that, again, I mean, that is something that I've mentioned over the past couple of weeks that I was comfortable taking out. I mean, if, I'm not trying to be too radical here and I'm not trying to blow, blow things up, but we could look at other things. I mean, we're, we are in a pretty dire situation, I think, econ, the economy is. I mean, we could look at, we, we had a discussion earlier about all these positions. There were 16 or 17 positions open. We had a discussion about which ones we really needed to have and the answer was we can eliminate two of them. That still leaves a lot of vacant positions. Do we freeze hiring for now? Do we eliminate positions? Do we go back and look at that? Uh, we never looked at, I mean, again, it's too late to do some of this stuff, but you know, we've got a lot of government owned, we've got a lot of county-owned properties in the, in the county that we need to go back and take a look at for pre, for next few years to see what we can do. Uh, I talked a lot about CIP projects the last eight weeks. If we don't eliminate some, we should certainly slow the, the pace or scope of them down because some of them are extremely expensive. Um, we're gonna have to go back to zero-based budgeting next year. We're gonna have to look at what FY25 is and figure out what we can add as opposed to what we should take out because we're, we are gonna be in a tough spot. But we were in a tough spot when we walked in here today. And I mentioned that earlier.
We eliminated 10 positions from the county, from the county books. I mean, we did, we, we eliminated the eight truck drivers, um, and the collection specialist and engineering surveyor. Um, we also, what, what did we do? And I'm gonna get the words wrong, but, uh, we went back to our FY24 budget.
Flat funded.
We flat funded where we could. And wasn't that significant?
Everything but public safety.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was, I thought, pretty significant by doing that.
Oh, it was about 700,000.
700,000. So, I mean, that's another major chunk that we, you know, I'm not comfortable with eliminating positions. Uh, but we made the decisions and we're gonna go with it. But that's another cut we made with the, uh, flat funding. So we made some serious and significant cuts for the FY25 budget. I, so it, what I'm asking is where else operationally can we make cuts? If the answer is nowhere, then what is the plan to balance the budget? And if the answer is one-time funds and not raise taxes, then that's gonna be an, an answer. Or if the answer is maintain the taxes and line it up, that's the other answer. It's really, it comes down to that. It's one or two, you know?
That's true.
So where, where do we wanna go with it? That's kinda.
I mean, I, I understand. I appreciate your comments. I, I mean, of course, everyone here knows I don't feel like we, we went deep enough. Um, we don't, we didn't make enough reductions, but that's probably where we are right now. Again, I, I just wanna reiterate that I, when we walked in here, the budget really wasn't balanced. I mean, it was balanced for this year and I think next year, but we're still have some real challenges ahead. Uh, a mix between cutting spending, reducing spending and then finding a way to increase revenue is clearly the way to go. But I'm not aware of, yeah, I'm not aware of any small, medium or large government in history that's sort of, that's balances budget on taxes alone. I mean, that's just not gonna work. So like, regardless of what we decide we, here today, we, we're gonna be sitting right here.
No, I, I, I agree with you. It, it's not on taxes alone. That's what, but that's why we made all these cuts and changes since March 28th or whatever date it was, um, to today. I wasn't, and again, maybe I was, I was wrong. I wasn't expecting the 1.5 million that took us a turn. Um, we did have 25, 26 and 27 close. And having three years balanced is pretty good. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good look for us to then work on the fourth, fifth and sixth year as we move forward. But, um, having three years balanced where we don't have to mask it and make believe that they're balanced through one-time funds, I think is a, a strong financial situation. And if it has to take revenue to get us there, then it has to take revenue to get us there.
And I think, and again, I voted for it. We sat here and talked DMS and we added a good million and a half because we got to 320. We added about 2 million after we cut, um, the 2.8. And I agree, we needed to do that. I also agree, there's, there's $30 million in the budget that didn't exist three years ago. And if we're only asking taxpayers to pay for 5,000, 5 million of that, I think, I think we've done a good job. I think we've done some good cuts to get to here, but to, to, to do all that work and plaster it with one-time money. And I don't care if you take the PFAS out and Georgetown out and 10 other things out, that doesn't affect this budget. It's not fiscally responsible.
Well, to Commissioner Vigliotti's question, he'd asked both myself and Commissioner Garen. Might have a slightly different opinion on PFAS than Commissioner Garen. I hear what you're saying, but it was sort of like today when we were the Board of Health and we had, they had them in front of us talking about lead. And as you remember today, that lead number kept changing and matifying over time. Now, I'm not saying, you know, maybe they're correct, maybe they're not. I'm not gonna get into that. I'm not here to debate that anymore. I'm here to debate PFAS. But it's gonna be something we're gonna have to deal with at some point. It's gonna be the, the boogeyman in the room, whether we like it or not. Um, whether that's today or next week or 10 years from now, we don't know, but we know it's gonna happen. Um, I understand where you're trying to go with the one-time funding. Um, I understand the thought. I also understand the thought of not going there with the one-time funding. I can see that as well. Um, I understand Commissioner Kyler's got somewhere to be at 6:00. Um, I'm keenly aware what time it is. It's almost 5:30. Um, I feel like we're kinda running through this with a chainsaw depending on how we look at it right now because I don't have a complete spreadsheet in front of me and that's nothing against budget, but I'm trying to look at this big screen and see what I can see. Um, I don't think anybody planned on coming here today and being here at 5:30. Just a thought for consideration because I don't know how we're gonna wrap this up easily and cleanly, no matter what angle we're looking at. And it would take all of us to actually do this and that's not anything against any of us. Would it be advisable to get a complete printout of what we're looking at on this current screen here of all of it? We potentially still have Thursday. I don't wanna go till Thursday. I think we were hopeful to get out of here today and be done on Tuesday. But if Commissioner Garen's point is looking at trying to cut things, you're looking at possibly trying to utilize one-time funding. I know there's concern about utilizing one-time funding. Maybe the best middle ground is for us to take another look at this individually and have some individual conversations and come back to this. Cause I don't know how we're gonna get out of here in 30 minutes. We spent a significant amount of time earlier today and I can't remember what the topic was now, but if, if that took well over 45 plus minutes, I don't know how we're gonna pull this in 30. I'm just trying to be realistic today for everybody. I'm trying to be understanding a staff's time and obviously Commissioner Kyler's got something to get to and I don't wanna keep him from it.
So very simply, um, you know, we get the discussion about PFAS and one-time funding. We take a vote on that. If it doesn't pass, then we'll reconvene. But I'm gonna go for broke here and I'm gonna say we use the PFAS and the one-time funding and no two-cent property tax increase. If I get three votes, we're out of here. If I don't get three votes, then we reconvene. That simple.
Well, there's a motion.
For the.
We're ruling with PFAS.
There's a motion on the table for PFAS. I think we need to either go through with that or.
I don't know what you're voting for.
So I, I, there is a second, right, on PFAS. Did we vote on PFAS?
No, we're not yet.
Okay, I'm getting a little punchy.
Be.
Okay.
Sunny English.
So to vote on that, depending on how that goes, it's not what you're suggesting, but it gets us within three and a half million dollars of getting this budget balanced like.
So you're saying cut that from PFAS and apply it to the already budget.
Bottom line. Right.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed?
No.
No, no.
All right, I'm gonna make one last, uh, motion then. And my final motion is to, um, can I see the total balance? It's 5. something. I will make a motion to use one-time revenue to, um, uh, balance the FY25 budget to 5 million, 46,000 dollars and 6 cents.
I know exactly where you're trying to go and I get it. I just, I just feel like I'm, we're jumping around trying to look at this whole picture right now. And I'd rather step away, look at the whole picture and have the complete perspective than trying to just nail this with one-time funding. That's, and that's not anything against what you're, what you're proposing, Commissioner Vigliotti. I just think I'd rather walk away from the painting and get to see the whole thing versus trying to just look at pieces of it.
Well, look, I'm, and look, I, I'm gonna throw all my cards on the table here.
No, it's fine. I'm not, I'm not being disagreed.
No, 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 no. So like I said earlier, you know, four of us voted to propose this budget. You only need three of us. Commissioner Garen, or at least I've said, I'm not gonna go along with things the way they are now. Commissioner Gordon, if you and Commissioner Kyler and Commissioner Rossin vote to this, we're out of here.
It's not about the, again, what I can say, it's not about being out of here. It's about, about quality. It's about doing it right.
Right.
And we're not gonna rush into a decision just to be out of here.
Yeah, we've been through, through months and we did not reduce the 4.8 million dollars we're talking about now. It, it seems to me a big stretch to think we're gonna figure out what that is. If, if that can't happen, and maybe you disagree with me, then there's really only two choices. One, you vote for the budget with the tax increases, or you vote for a budget that uses one-time money to, to balance it.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, hold on. Why didn't she, did you make a motion?
I did. Nobody seconded it for it. Sorry. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget with two cents property tax increase and our budget office gets rid of the 200,000 at the bottom. And, uh, I, I just, I feel, I feel like we sat here and added half that today. And the responsible thing to do is increase the taxes, have the taxpayers pay for it. I'm still worried. I wish we could have done. is increase the taxes, have the taxpayers pay for it. I'm still worried. I wish we could have done three cents because, um, I'm worried how we're still going to be the next couple of years. And I, I just think if we do it with one-time money, we're dooming ourselves. So I'd like to make the motion, we accept the budget as it is with a two-cent property tax. Um, so where's the bottom? That's not the bottom line. Is that the bottom line? What's that?
I'm just asking.
Be 213.
That's with you.
Yeah.
And.
But is that the bottom line, 213?
Well, and she gets rid of it.
On the bottom line.
About 90 be zero. And, and again, um, I, I know. I think I'm a very fiscal conservative Republican, but I just feel like when you've got 30 million in here that you never had before and you've got six more million from education and we get it down to 70 hours a month, a tax increase, I, I think we've done pretty well. Ah, anybody willing to second that?
I. I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I think the challenge is, and we all know this, and I know we're all aware of it, so I'm not by any means suggesting we're not, but we're not living in a vacuum. And it doesn't matter if it's recordation, property taxes, 40% increases in groceries, you know, your $20 Big Mac and the rest of it. And I don't think we're headed into a very good place economically. Obviously I can sit here and look at the out years. I don't like what I'm seeing there any more than the rest of us do. But personally, and I don't want to push this any farther out, but I'd rather us take another day and take a stab at it. I'd rather look at this for the next three days and stare at it. And I know, you know, Mr. Zaleski's not loving that idea to say the least. I'm not particularly fond of it either, but I, I think there's still some things we can do. I mean, clearly we were able to add things today. We should be able to remove some things as well. And I don't know how we're going to do it in under 30 minutes.
The, the two cent increase in property tax, we, 4.8 million and the recordation was how much again?
Or two.
About 14.
I'm sorry, 42?
Two.
If, if we wouldn't have changed stuff today, I wanted to advocate to slightly reduce recordation, but again, last year I sold properties. No one questioned recordation prior to settlement and no one questioned it at settlement. It, it's, 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 and I understand the real estate people, but it's, uh, you'll, you only pay it if you buy or sell a house. And it's, it's, it's one little blip on the, your, probably your property taxes is a plus or minus bigger than it on your, on your settlement sheet. So, yeah, I just. Uh, and like I say, I'm willing to take the fall. I made the motion and I've got some people upset. Some people, uh, I, I think the majority of the county understands it. And I think, and, and I got a comment the other day that I, I think I shared with one or two of you. Um, and I won't say, but thanked me for a couple of things and then said, I'm so disappointed that you're going to raise taxes, but I know you guys are as disappointed as I am. And so it must be the last option. So I, I think that's the majority of Carroll County. Um, I know if I'm a Realtor, if I'm a Carroll County resident, I want the schools thriving. I want EMS, that ambulance showing up. I want um, Sheriff Dewey's keeping us the safest county and, and the state. I want the quality of life. I want the library. I'd like it open on Sunday, but I want the library. Um, you know, it, it's just, I just feel like we have beat this up pretty hard and I, I respect what you're saying, but, um, I'm not smart enough to come up with anything in the next day or two. You know, it's, it's, uh, I don't know what else we can.
But I do feel like. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just, if we don't get the vote right now, we're going to meet Tuesday morning.
After the, the current schedule is 1 o'clock.
Well, why can't we meet in the morning?
To meet whenever you.
I, I mean, I'd rather meet in the morning than adopt by the afternoon if possible.
Okay.
Um, but, um, well, no, that's just my opinion. I mean,
I'm okay with me.
Whatever is comfortable for everybody, um, you know, I just.
It sounds like we're going to have to.
No.
I mean, yeah, um, I, I, I could, I could, I could agree with, with 11 o'clock perhaps on Tuesday if we think that's enough time because we've got a one o'clock showtime on Tuesday. So we're going to have to figure something out.
No, that wouldn't be, no.
I think staff would be more tired. I think it'd be adopting. I think they need more time to, to draft the ordinance.
So we would do that on.
Bump that to Thursday then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we would meet on Tuesday, 11 o'clock for work session, adoption on Thursday during session.
Okay. Um, you know, I just wanted to add, um, I, I agree with Commissioner Gordon that we probably need to just take a step back, but I will, as we walk away, I would just remind everybody, I mean, Commissioner Vigliotti is, I think he, he's the one who's willing to compromise here. We're just left to look for 4.8 million. And he's, it's, it, I just, I just still feel like we can do that somehow. And if maybe we have enough time, we will, maybe we won't. But we're not trying to come up with 10 million. Or, or excuse me, 9 million, it's 4.8.
Beat on this pretty hard. And I think, uh, this picture makes next, next year quite easy, but not impossible. And 27 is going to be tough.
So what point of, point of order you put in the motion, I second it, you're going to withdraw the motion or are we going to go through the, the vote?
I guess it can't hurt to vote.
Right? It's up to you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No. 11 o'clock Tuesday?
Well, I, I thought we had to, we had to get together before that.
So what time?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. On 1 o'clock.
What time are we meeting? But at 11 o'clock Tuesday.
Do we want to do 11 o'clock Tuesday? Is that 11 on Tuesday?
Will that work?
We'll do what we need to do.
I, I may have some ways to be at 3 o'clock on Tuesday, but at this point, I guess I probably shouldn't even bring that up.
That, that gives you four, well, it gives you three and a half hours.
Yeah. I mean, it's a pretty hard, pretty hard 3 o'clock.
Can you go earlier than 11?
Make, I could. We always going to say we want to do earlier and let it run to whatever we need. Yeah. I mean, do we want to do nine?
Yeah, I can, you know, you want to do nine?
I, I don't care.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd do six.
So, yeah, really. So 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock Tuesday.
Okay.
9 o'clock on Tuesday. Motion to adjourn.
So moved in second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.